Okay. Okay. Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Montclair Zoning Board of Adjustment. It is Wednesday, October 16, 2019. Notice has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and sending a copy to the Montclair Times and the Star Ledger. Roll call? Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Fleischer?
Here.
Mr. Church?
Here.
Mr. McCullough?
Present.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Allen is excused this evening. Mr. Simon is on his way. Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Caulfield?
Here.
And Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Graham, go on to the announcements.
Announcements of the postponements, yes. The first postponement this evening is application 2643 for property at 10 Alexander Avenue, applicant Bruce Byrd. The applicant has requested that this matter be carried forward to the November 13, 2019 meeting of the board. The applicant, the application will be carried with no further notice. The second application that will be carried this evening is application 2647 for property at 48 Label Street, applicant John Florrick. The application will be carried to the November 13, 2019 meeting of the board, and there will be completed notice on this application. And then the final application to be carried is application 2662 for property at 27 Orange Road, 27 Orange Road LLC. The application will be carried to the Wednesday, December 18, 2019 meeting of the board.
So, the minutes of the September 18 meeting on page two, line 30. I think, I mean, it should read one bedroom for each of the two units. I mean, and then on page four, just so it's clear, number two on line 18, it should say the HVAC unit shall be tested while all units are running. And then, just as a comment on line 36, because it shows up on the agenda as well, it's referring to the 36 Orange Road as non-residential, and unless I'm missing something, it's definitely residential. And on page five, line 23, delete the word additional since there are no car trips from the property now, and have it just read one or two, vehicle trips per hour, I assume was his testimony. Anyone else with any changes to those minutes? Someone want to move them as amended?
I'll move the minutes as amended.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Staying.
And just for the record, Mr. Simon is present.
Okay.
And then we have the resolution for the property at 47 Mission Street. Just, I think for clarity and accuracy, I think we should add a whereas, it's whereas, that says whereas the applicant requested a variance, and I don't remember the code number for a front yard setback variance, because the notice did apply for that even though it was not quite the front yard variance she thought she was applying for, it didn't specify. And then, on page two, number seven, just the end of that condition, have it read the last full line, the addition requires a front yard setback. And, oh, I missed, on bottom of page one, the very last line, it should say we'll add one bedroom for each of the two units. Anyone else with any other changes to those minutes? Someone want to move the minute, I mean, move the resolution?
Go ahead. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Staying.
And then we have the resolution for St. Luke's Episcopal Church, and the same change to condition number two on page four, inserting after while, while all the units are running. Any other changes to that resolution? Someone want to move the resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
Staying.
So, next on the agenda is the conclusion of 360 Orange Road. Just to, but let's do a couple of things. One, Mr. Fleischer will not be participating, he will not be voting on the application because he did not listen to all the tapes. He can comment if he so feels like it, but he will not be voting. All the remaining seven members were either present for all hearings or have listened, watched, in some way digested the hearings at which they were not present, we have documentation of that, it's been filed. So, they're ready to proceed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can hear me now. I can hear myself better. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and indeed all board members. As you recall, this is an application by the owner of vacant property designated block 2904, lot 68, and sometimes referred to as 360 Orange Road, and located between 364 Orange Road to the south, containing garden apartments, and 354 Orange Road to the north, containing supportive housing, and also 340 Orange Road to the north, containing primarily senior housing. The applicant seeks use variance relief and also site plan approval in order to construct on a long, narrow lot, two two-family dwellings, a driveway and onsite parking, and related site improvements. All four of the aforesaid properties are located in the R1 one-family zone. In our judgment, under the New Jersey State Land Use Law, and with respect to the positive criteria, there are specific purposes of zoning and strong special reasons in support of the use variance relief and the project. First of all, the project promotes the general welfare because the property is particularly suitable under the law for the project, zoning purpose A. The adjoining and adjacent properties to the south and the north are both highly relevant and instructive. First, the subject property is bordered to the south by the Willowmere Apartments, that's 364 Orange Road with frontage on Orange Road, and containing three buildings on one lot with 38 apartments on 78,336 square feet of land. Although there is not any density requirement, as most of you know, in the R1 zone, the effective density for the Willowmere Apartments is 21.13 dwelling units per acre, as we explained at the public hearing in September. Second, the subject property is bordered to the north by a newer residential development of supportive housing at 354 Orange Road, also with frontage on Orange Road, and containing two multifamily buildings on one lot with a total of 12 apartments on 55,156 square feet. The effective density for this property is 9.48 dwelling units per acre. And third, the subject property is bordered, two properties to the north, by the South End Gardens Apartments, primarily for seniors, located at 340 Orange Road, again with frontage on Orange Road, and containing one large four-story building with 100 apartments on 143,560 square feet. The effective density for South End Gardens is 30.34 dwelling units per acre. As our professional planner testified at the last hearing, the subject property lying between, and as I say it, bookended by these three properties, has not for more than two years drawn any interest as a single-family property or a two-family property, but only as a multifamily property of up to six dwellings or more. The applicant, however, is proposing a more restrained, in our judgment, a very reasonable project. Two two-family dwellings on one now vacant, narrow lot consisting of 23,510 square feet for a total of four dwelling units on the property, each consisting of 1,440 square feet plus a basement of 702 square feet. Conformity with or well within, all prescribe yard setback, building height, building width, and building coverage requirements, a single driveway, architectural detail, including covered front porches in keeping with the neighborhood, substantial new trees and landscaping, and effective residential density of 7.41 dwellings per acre, far lower than the adjoining and adjacent apartment complexes, and even lower than the adjoining 12 dwellings. We propose four dwellings surrounded by 150 dwellings. As a result, both factually and legally, the property and the project are particularly suitable, as the last vacant property in a stretch of four, and as vacant interior property rather than bookend property, the property is indeed uniquely suitable, although that's not a legal requirement. It is uniquely suitable because no other property in our area can make our one-of-a-kind case. Second, for the reasons I just stated, the project promotes traditional zoning goals of adequate light, air, and open space, zoning purpose C. Third, for the same reasons, the project promotes appropriate residential density, zoning purpose C. Fourth, the project provides sufficient space at an appropriate location for modern, midsize, market-rate residential units, zoning purpose G. And last, the project its design, including its grounds, promote a desirable visual environment, zoning purpose I. At the same time, with respect to the negative criteria, the variances in the project do not cause any substantial detriment to surrounding properties. The closest surrounding properties are, of course, the ones I've identified to the south and the north facing Orange Road. As you've heard, they're located in the R1 zone, but they are multifamily projects, which is defined in Montclair as three or more apartments in a building. 12 apartments, 38 apartments, 100 apartments, you do the math, it adds up to 150 apartments surrounding this property. By contrast, the subject property is the last vacant property situated between those properties, and is by far the smallest of all the properties. It does not contain any old structures to be demolished. Residential use and only residential use is proposed. Four dwellings are proposed on approximately one-half acre. Further, the two two-family dwellings exceed the front and rear yards prescribed for one-family dwellings. The required front yard for a one-family is 51.25 feet, but here we propose 65 feet. The required rear yard for a one-family is 78.6 feet, but here we propose 94.10 feet. Also, as you have heard, the project conforms with or as well within all prescribed bulk standards, including all setbacks, building height, building width, 48.7 feet permitted, we propose 32 feet, and building coverage, 25 percent permitted on this lot, and we propose only 14.2 percent. The prime or main view of the project appears as a 32-foot-wide, single-family home with a wraparound porch facing Orange Road, which I think is different and better than the adjoining's. Two buildings, of course, provide more windows for each dwelling, and thus better living space for them. The storm water retention system meets the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storm event standards. The roadway site distances are more than adequate, and there is, quote, "no perceptible impact to roadway traffic conditions," according to our traffic expert. The architectural design is in keeping with nearby properties. The project provides two parking spaces and, for each unit, and a barrier-free parking space. Provides extensive new landscaping. We will comply with tree ordinance, including selection of trees only that are on the approved list. The project provides short walks to the neighborhood commercial shopping district, public transportation, and two public parks. But perhaps most significantly, on the issue of surrounding properties, no one has appeared to ask one question or to oppose this application in any way. Last, the variances and the project do not cause any substantial impairment of the zone plan or zoning ordinance. The subject property is the smallest and in the middle of four contiguous properties, all facing Orange Road, and all located in a short stretch of the R1 zone and a tiny portion of the entire R1 zone in Montclair. Three of these four properties, bookends to the subject, contain multifamily developments with a total of 150 dwellings surrounding the subject. The subject is not a bookend to the others. The project does not extend any dwellings outside or beyond 364 Orange Road to the south or 340 Orange Road to the north. Rather, it proposes four dwellings completely inside those 150 dwellings on the outside, at the least and lowest effective density in this short stretch of four properties. And the project has been designed, as I have summarized, with due attention to architecture, public view from the road, onsite parking, landscaping, and many other details. The application makes sense, given the now longstanding surrounding development, the size and location of the property, and the reasonableness of the project. The neighborhood has not come out to call its reasonableness into question. For these reasons, this project will not have any substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. At the last public hearing, the question arose whether granting the proposed dwellings would be rezoning, or whether it would be within your variance power. A decision by you to exercise your variance power provided to you by New Jersey law and to grant variance relief to the applicant would not constitute rezoning. You have specific guidance here. Because the question of rezoning was the question before the Superior Court, Exhibit A. 7, when it reviewed this board's decision in 2010 to deny use variance relief to the adjoining property owner at 354 Orange Road to construct 12 units for supportive housing. The Superior Court ruled, after reviewing the case law, one, that the board should have approved by variance the supportive housing, and two, that approval by variance at this location of 12 units on 1.25 acres does not, as a matter of law, constitute rezoning. Therefore, given the context, the four contiguous properties, all of them now developed, except for the smallest of them left in the middle. If approval by variance on the immediately adjoining property of 12 units on 1.25 acres is not rezoning, then approval by variance on the subject property of four dwellings on .54 acres, one-third the number of dwellings on half the land, is, as a matter of logic, also not rezoning. In other words, if the adjoining development did not exceed what can be done by the variance power, then certainly this project does not exceed what can be done by the variance power. As a related point, it would not make sense in any event to rezone these four contiguous properties from the R1 zone to, say, the R3 zone or the R4 zone, which permit the greatest residential density in Montclair outside the commercial zones. While the R3 zone and the R4 zone both permit 18 dwellings per acre, the Willowmere Apartments exceed that and would immediately not conform to the new zone. And South End Gardens also exceeds 18 units per acre, and it would immediately not conform to the new zone. Further, changing the zoning to 18 dwellings per acre would permit more dwellings on the subject property, and also more dwellings on the adjoining supportive housing property. These are the reasons why the variance mechanism is the appropriate mechanism in a case like this for the subject property. With respect to the Medici decision's requirement for an enhanced quality of proof and clear and specific proofs, I have three comments. First, we have done here what I and my team attempt to do in every use variance case we bring before you. We go into the facts, we go into the details, we review fully the positive criteria and the negative criteria, and we explain and reconcile the use variance. Second, I refer to our professional planner, Exhibit A. 3, and his testimony, and without repeating them, his references to the enhanced quality of proof. And third, in my judgment, this application does not present the circumstances that alarmed the Medici Supreme Court at the end of the 1980s, where in the 1980s, the South Plainfield Board of Adjustment approved four use variances in a row to build four separate motels in a residential zone. Rather, here, considering the four contiguous properties and their history as it has been made available to us, there has been infrequent use of the use variance mechanism. The Superior Court ordered a use variance almost 10 years ago. The Board of Adjustment here granted a use variance to expand onsite parking at South End Gardens almost six years ago. This demonstrates not ignoring the governing body, as the board did in Medici, but rather good use and selective use of your variance power to make adjustments when it makes sense. Finally, we have made all of the changes to our plans you have asked us to make. We agreed to eliminate parking space number five for the benefit of dwelling 2B. We agreed to change a guest parking space to a barrier-free parking space. We agreed to install a paved walkway between the buildings and to light the walkway. We agreed to increase all onsite lighting to .5-foot candles. We agreed to place several trees you flagged in the event they don't survive. We reviewed each item of the board engineer's report, and we agreed to everything, except we requested separate trash and recycling for each unit, which we've shown on the plans, and except we have argued for a six-feet-tall fence along stretches of the side property lines, simply to continue the line of the existing six-feet-tall fences on both sides of the property that have already been installed by the adjoining's. But if you want a four-and-one-half-feet-tall fence in that area, that's okay with us, too. In closing, I want to remind you that we need five yes votes out of the seven people that are here tonight eligible to vote. We need five yes votes for the application to be approved, and we hope five of you get behind this application. We actually hope all of you get behind this application because we think it is a very good application, but we need at least five of you to vote for it. The only other item I have to say is that we have tried as hard as we can, and as we usually do, to present a sound case and a compelling case, and I hope you agree with us. As always, I want to thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Start discussion, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you for presenting. The properties that we have, that you discussed, the senior citizens' housing, is that correct? And the supportive housing complex are kind of needs that fit the community in some way. The supportive housing was put in that location at the time, and also the senior citizens' house was put in there, before the master plan and any of that stuff was put there. So then it puts our property in there, and I'm not sure if our property is using that need as the other two properties are using. So, I am not sure I'm behind this project, but I will listen to my colleagues and make a decision from that point on. Thank you.
Ms. Harris?
I am generally in support of this application with the changes that were made based on the board's comments. I still don't really understand why two buildings are proposed on this site as opposed to one. That would be more conforming to the zone, but, you know, you only get a few more windows, I think, per unit by separating the buildings, but that's, I don't think that really affects the application that much, it just doesn't make much sense to me.
Considering that there's a large apartment complex on one side and on the other, single-family homes, it does seem like somewhat of a natural buffer that it's two-family. I would still like to hear from my colleagues and anyone else, any others who are in the audience, see what their, you know, ideas are in regards to the community in which it resides, but I do appreciate the fact that you were able to comply with some of our restrictions that be recommended from the last meeting. I'm going to listen to what my colleagues have to say, and for the most part, I do think it's all right, but I still haven't finalized my decision.
Mr. Church?
This application, to me, was very difficult to come to a conclusion on. In past applications where we've seen, at least since I've been here, attempts to put a R3 development in an R1 zone, we voted against it. We felt that that would be changing the zone, and that's the job of the council to change zones, and so we would deny that. This is a similar situation. You have an R1 zone all around this place, across the street and down the street, and behind it, R1 zones. What the proposal here is, is to put two buildings with four families and call it R1. I think that, on the face of it, that would fly in the face of me voting for it. However, after thinking on this for a while, and driving by it several times, and trying to come to some conclusion in my own mind, I believe that this plan is probably the best plan for that piece of property. Because, and I've mentioned this to myself and to others, barring putting a park in there, I don't see a single-family home going in there. I see this is probably the best alternative. I do not think it attacks, I think it fulfills the requirements of the SECA decision, it fills the requirements of our idea of what should be done with Montclair, although all over town, we're seeing multiple family dwellings going everywhere. But this unique piece of property is a piece of property that's very difficult to develop. So, where I was stumped to approve this, or to put my approval on it, I've come to the conclusion that there is no alternative for this piece of property, other than that what's proposed. So therefore, I've come to the conclusion that this is the best use for this piece of property, I believe. Some of my colleagues have mentioned, why put two in there, two buildings, why not just one? I believe the breakup allows for more green space. Secondly, I have a problem with just one aspect of this. I don't understand why a fence has to go all the way down, six feet. So I have that objection to it. But other than that, I would be in favor of this application as presented because I can find no other reason to deny it. The neighborhood has not come out against it, and the properties immediately adjacent on either side have been used, not as R1 zones, but as multifamily. And this is the least obtrusive use I can think of. I think that the applicant did try to I think that the applicant did try to develop the best plan he could. I don't think there's much more you could do with this little strip. I'm concerned about the removal of trees, as always, because the removal of trees and nothing goes back is a detriment to the town townwide. So I would be in favor of this application as is presented with some caveats that possibly my other colleagues may bring up, but I have no reason to believe a six-foot fence has to go anywhere.
Mr. Church, you made reference to the SECA decision.
Yes, did I make the wrong reference?
I think you meant to say the Medici case.
The Medici, excuse me.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Fleischer, can you comment on it?
Yes.
If you can.
Yes.
I don't know the details of the application. I did not sit through the application. Those of you who know me know that I'm against upzoning and increasing density, particularly in the R1 zone. I mean, my questions would have been focused on how many units one puts on the site. And it's a unique site, it's very deep, not uniquely narrow relative to single-family housing, but certainly very deep. And so the only issues in my mind are how does one arrive at four units, frankly, versus six, versus three, versus two? It's like, at one level, the applicant, in a sense, negotiated with themselves to decide what to pursue, but I'm less, I'm not comfortable, per se, if someone would have said, well, we'll put two single-family homes on that property. Maybe that's, to me, a little closer to where I'd feel comfortable. I don't have a vote, I'm simply expressing a concern that I have in general when there's an increasing density on a set of lots, particularly in a, what I'll call a fragile zone within a sometimes mistreated portion of the community. And so I worry about those things collectively. Beyond that, I don't have anything to add other than I'm, I don't love four units, but I don't have something alternatively to suggest or offer under any circumstances.
My response, in many ways, mirrors Mr. Church and his concerns. I've looked at this property several times. I have, honestly, difficulty imagining how houses are going to be placed in this very narrow strip. Looking at the neighborhood, my sense is that there is a very high level of density. I'm concerned that when we're placing additional housing in that strip, that there is the further intensification of that density. I've looked at it from the perspective of additional vehicles coming out of that strip onto the main road. I know that the traffic study has suggested that it would not create an impediment to the traffic pattern in that area. I'm not fully convinced of that. I also, I also wonder, have wondered whether or not there, this piece of property would be better used for recreational purposes of some sort, green, maintaining it as a green space in a neighborhood that is already intensely developed. And so I don't have an alternative, however, to propose in terms of what that might be other than to simply cite that as something that perhaps would be a better use of this I struggle with four units being on this property tucked between these adjacent developments. I'm not sure that it represents the best option for individual residential living, but everybody makes their own decision in terms of the environment in which they're comfortable or they're not. So I'm still undecided in terms of this property, and I'll listen to my next colleague.
Mr. Simon.
I'm generally in favor of the application. For this particular property along this stretch with the neighboring properties, I do see it being very challenging as to what you could come up with, and short of leaving it as an open space in terms of any construction, it would be challenging. I do recognize and appreciate the fact that it was limited to four units as opposed to going for the Hilton, going for six or eight or even larger, that would kind of flow with the adjacent properties, not necessarily in accordance with our, the plan, but I recognize the restraint. So generally, I'm in favor, especially since they have agreed to some of the conditions that we had put forth for the properties from the last meeting. So I am in favor.
I also have struggled with this application. I think, and I guess there's several parts of this, and the, I don't view the court decision as standing for what has been argued both by Mr. Owen and Mr. Steck is standing for. I mean, the court decision was, the Board determined, the court determined, there was no doubt that the adjacent lot was an inherently beneficial use, so there was no issue of Medici. It was purely a matter of whether there was a substantial impairment of the zone plan. The Board concluded it was, the court disagreed, but I, you know, but part of the court's decision was that, that what was proposed was not a population that would be much greater than two single, large, two-single-family homes, about the same population or less, and that it couldn't conclude that that would be a substantial impairment of the zone plan. And what was proposed there gave appearances of two-single-family, and because of the nature of the use that made it inherently beneficial, the applicant wanted the properties connected with the parking lot driveway done, but from the street, it looks like two single-family dwellings, large, but, you know, I think that was part of what influenced the court. Part of the problem I have with the argument, and, you know, I think, you know, I think the court's view of the density of that project, given that the units are all single occupancy units and the nature of the inhabitants, is you can't really view the density as the number of units as being equivalent to what's density of single-family homes or two-family homes. But the argument, looking at the garden apartment complex next door and the senior citizen, if, the logic of the argument is, well, why not even denser than the four units and, you know, where you draw the line? And that's been part of my view as to approaching the governing body as to rezoning and having them determine, and the governing body is not locked into the existing zones, they could have said, or that, okay, we think it should be zoned, you know, whatever, and set a density that they feel would be appropriate, rather than us unilaterally determining based on what a particular applicant is proposing, what the four units would be. Having said that, I mean, I think there is an argument for relief other than a single-family dwelling. What I am having the greatest difficulty in rationalizing is the two structures. I mean, that's, yes, the garden apartment next door has more than one building, but the, you know, the R1 zone, you get a house. R2 zone, you get a two-family house. You don't get multiple principal structures, and that is something that is very atypical and different. And I don't think you can view next door, in the context of it being inherently beneficial use, the fact that they have two houses, two buildings on the same lot, that is a lot that's twice as large, and the applicant, because of the nature of the residents, wanted to have accessibility to the two units. And from the street, it looks, you don't know, there isn't a lot line there, because, and it doesn't look any different than driving down and looking in all the other single-family homes as you go down Orange Road. But my, you know, biggest concern with that is the, to some extent, the argument is based on the depth of the lot. And while I agree that the lot is somewhat atypically deep, when you look at the lots behind on Pleasant Avenue, they are, many of them are as deep, and a couple of them are deeper than this lot, and why don't they come in and say, I want to build a second house? Not a two-family, just a single-family. You grant a variance to them, letting them have two principal buildings. Why can't I do the same? My lot is the same depth as theirs, I can keep the same amount of green space that they kept, I can do it conforming, and that's where I just can't get there is, you know, that is something very different than what we have done on other applications in the R1 and the R2 zones. And that is, that is my biggest substantive issue with this is, you know, we're putting two houses back-to-back that, you know, two-two families that I, that is just something that is totally different, and is even totally different from next door where the buildings are, the facility next door where the two buildings are next to each other, you know, both facing the street as, you know, conventionally, and as I said, driving by, you don't notice anything different. So I, now I don't know what to do in terms of, so we could deny it, that's one, we could approve a two-family, we could, five members could vote to approve it as presented with the conditions that have been discussed. I guess just leave it to someone to make a motion as to what they feel most comfortable. I mean, but are those three permissible options for us to do?
I believe so.
But it's, we close the hearing.
So this would be a time for someone to make a motion?
I'll phrase that word thoughtfully. Someone has to make a motion.
I will make a motion to accept the application as presented with the restrictions discussed at the September meeting and with the cop, with the additional restriction. That I see no purpose in six-foot fences all the way down to the thing, I'd rather see four-foot fences, and I'd want that part of my motion. Other than that, I would move this application as presented with those restrictions.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Can we just go over the conditions we had put in the September meeting?
I probably can do it better than, okay. So it'd be eliminating parking space number five, replacing it with landscaping, creating a handicap parking space, conforming with the tree ordinance, replacing any trees that were intended to be preserved but that died within a two-year time period, that there'd be a paved walkway between the buildings that would be lit, and its conditions, 1, 2, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, and I, and five is the fence condition that Mr. Church wanted them to conform to the, want me to do that slowly?
No, I, no, if we get there, I'm going to have to listen to the tape again. I've got it, I've got the notes. I think there's one other condition also, the, in Mr. Pedo's memo, he did indicate that they would have to comply with the residential development fees, Montclair Code, Section So that's the motion.
Second.
Well, can we just go variance by variance and vote on that, or?
We can, you can ask the mover to pull the fence variance out if that's what's troubling you.
Well, it seems like the chair has an issue with the number of principal dwellings as well, so I don't.
Well, we, if this motion fails, there could be a subsequent motion.
So we had a second from Mr. Simon?
So we need a roll call.
Okay, so we'll call the roll. Okay. Mr. Caulfield?
No.
Ms. Harris?
No.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Moore? Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Okay, that motion fails.
There could be a subsequent motion if someone wants to make one.
Okay, so if we simply, if we do the same motion but deny the variance for?
The second principal building.
That ends up?
Allowing them to build one two-family home.
And with the, with the same conditions that we discussed.
Well, the original application that was requesting four dwelling units on a property.
Right, well, if you're going in that direction, the motion would be to allow one two-family unit. Yeah, yeah, so they would need the D1 for the two-family unit, the single building. It would be to approve that, it would be to deny the second principal building on the lot, would be to provide the four-foot-high fence and subject to all the conditions from the prior motion that are equally applicable to this arrangement.
Just so, the ordinance is four-and-a-half feet for the fence, so we're letting them to put them.
While you're doing this, I just wonder if, since you're considering a modification, we've had several comments about why two buildings? Would you entertain four in a building? And we would present that plan to you, we could return if you want to do that, if you just want one building. I mean, we're trying to bend over backwards to recognize your concerns and to get something reasonable, and I'd appreciate it if you'd at least float the motion and give it a try. We'll make it a building, and we'll let you look at it again. We'll make it a condition that we'll come back, and you can review our architecture.
That's up to the Board as to whether they want to consider that.
So the choice is one building, but it could be?
And that one building could be put back further in the site.
And then, and then, I mean, I think at that point, we would be only approving the use variance and requiring them to come back for site plan approval.
Correct. That's reasonable.
Does anybody want to consider that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion, just let me help you frame it. It would be to grant the D1 use variance to allow four dwelling units. It would be to deny the D1 variance to permit more than one principal building, and consistent with the past motion, you would only get a four-and-a-half-foot fence.
Well, I guess we'll take the four-and-a-half-foot fence.
Well, you said you, there was.
Yeah, no, no, we said that. So it would be, it would be four units but one building.
Correct.
All the other conditions would.
And that would be, you would be subject to site plan approval also.
We'd have to come back, a Section 76 return.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I thought you did.
I didn't, no.
Do we have a second then?
I'll second.
So it was Ms. Harris made the motion, and Mr. Simon seconded?
Mr. Church.
Mr. Church, sorry, yes. All right, there's a lot of people. Okay, so roll call. Mr. Caulfield?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCullough?
No.
Mr. Church? Mr. Harrison?
No.
It's approved.
It's approved, subject to site plan approval, so you're going to have to come back.
Okay, so.
We should probably fix a date cert, and so you don't have to renotice, right?
Oh, I don't know. Oh, I don't know.
Yeah. How, how much, yeah, Mr. Haynes is nodding his head enthusiastic. That's your client, you should agree with him, Mr. Owen. So how long does it take, Mr. Owen, to get back with a revised site plan? You want to confer with your client for a moment?
Two months.
So that would be the board's December 18th meeting.
Okay, Mr. Owen, you're requesting that the matter be carried to the board's December 18th for the consideration of site plan approval? And you'll grant the board an extension of time to act until that date?
I will do that, yes. We're, we're good, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this matter is being continued for site plan purposes until December 18th. There'll be no further notice, and we'll see some of you then. I am refusing myself on the next application.
The next application is from Montclair Town Center LLC for property located at 325 Claremont Avenue. As far as an application with the Montclair Zoning Board of Adjustment for amended site plan approval to permit a freestanding sign and two wall-mounted signs on the property. The applicant has also applied for variance from Montclair Code Section 347-109, which does not permit freestanding or wall-mounted signs in the R3 zoning district. The property is designated township maps, tax maps, has block 1507, lot 20. I think that's about it. You can go from there. Mr. Tremulak?
Yes, gavening, Mr. Fleischer, members of the board. Mr. Fleischer, welcome back. It's good to see you back on the dais. Alan Tremulak appearing on behalf of the applicant, Montclair Town Center LLC. This is an application for amended site plan approval to permit the installation of two, well, to permit several signs to be installed on the property at 325 Claremont Avenue, which is the relocated Carriage House, formerly the Carriage House for what used to be the Georgian Inn. Not sure how many board members were on the board several years ago when this board granted a use variance and site plan approval to permit the Carriage House to be relocated to its current position, and also, most importantly, to allow for that building to be utilized as medical offices. Property is still located in the R3 zone, a residential zoning district, which doesn't permit any kind of business signage, but the board approved a business use, a medical use for this building. So we're here tonight to amend the site plan approval to allow for some business signage for this property that's appropriate for the property and basically consistent with what the zoning ordinance would allow for medical offices or any other commercial uses. Specifically, we're seeking approval for a freestanding sign in front of the building and two wall-mounted plaque signs adjacent to the front door and the rear door to the building. The application, this property is designated as an historic landmark in the town, consequently the HPC reviewed the application and endorsed it with three comments, all of which, as you'll hear, my client has agreed to comply with. So I tend to call Kevin Costello to discuss the application on behalf of the applicant, my first and perhaps only witness.
Would you raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board? State your name and address, please.
Kevin Costello, 157 Forest Street, Montclair.
Kevin, you're familiar with the property located at 325 Claremont Avenue, correct?
I am.
And that property is owned by Montclair Town Center LLC?
Yes.
All right, and just, I know you've testified before the board on prior occasions, perhaps not with respect to this application, but just what is your relationship to the owner of the property?
I'm the director of Montclair Town Center.
Okay. And the property contains, as I mentioned, the relocated Georgian, Carriage House formerly part of the Georgian Inn, correct?
Correct.
And has that building been converted to medical offices as per the prior approval of this board?
It has. It's not fully occupied. Right now, it's 50% occupied with another unit. Should start construction fairly soon.
And you filed this application seeking to amend the site plan approval and specifically to install some signage on the property, correct?
Correct. Currently, no signage. We always thought we had it, probably had to come in at some point. Once we had some tenants in there, we had had the HPC on site several times, working with the revisions committee on different details of the, of the structure, and we had discussed with them kind of what they would like to see for a freestanding sign. And so that's kind of where the design comes from. And then we had a tenant that moved in on the first floor, Sports Med Physical Therapy. They also wanted some building signage, so we added that to the application as well.
All right, so let's talk about the specific signs you'd like to install, starting with the freestanding sign.
Sure, so, and we should probably mark it, but there's a, this is not the sign in question. This is a sign that's actually around this, around the corner at Park Street at another building that we own, but it's similar in style and materials to what we're proposing here. The one that we're actually proposing for the Carriage House has these kind of concrete pillars that are supposed to kind of have pointed tops to look like those old corner markers you see around town a lot. Other than that, it's got a cement board backing, you know, clear anodized aluminum panels with vinyl lettering on them.
Okay, we mark that as Exhibit A1?
Yes. This is all small, but. This is one of the plans that was submitted with the.
Yeah, we just, you know, printed out at full size, but you can see the small sign there. So, yeah, the concrete posts instead of wooden posts, and we didn't do the large kind of address number at the top. We didn't think it was necessary. It does have the address across that. What looks like a steel beam that kind of goes across there, it's actually a fiberglass beam that's a little bit easier to work with, but we've had success with those in the past for signage. So it's got four locations for the, they'll end up being four tenants in this building. As I said, two currently occupied. And then there's some additional building signage proposed, which is kind of keeping with the same style, aluminum, clear anodized aluminum, and then with some offsets to keep it away from the building a little and give it some depth.
And can you discuss the location where this sign would be situated and the considerations that went into your decision to locate it at that portion of the property?
Sure. You know, this, this, Claremont has rather large setbacks, so while this is very close to the property line, it's quite far from the road itself. And actually, the, the location of where we ended up with on this sign actually, you know, was driven by those meetings with the HPC. We kind of said, "We want to do it in the front yard. Do you have a preference?" It ends up being, I think, four feet from the sidewalk and maybe closer to eight feet. We could probably measure it off there from the road itself. But that puts it right, you know, very close to the property line itself.
Is there any lighting proposed for the sign?
No.
And the dimensions are shown on the plan, and I think they're also mentioned in Mr. Peddow's memorandum. Is it correct, the sign is six feet by, six feet high, six feet in width?
I think it ends up, yes. That's with the post. The, the sign panels themselves are only four foot three, looks like.
All right, and can you now discuss the wall-mounted plaque signs that you're proposing?
Sure.
Do you have any sample of those?
Okay.
I'm going to pass it on. Sure. You want to mark it? Should we mark it? Let's mark this. Perhaps you can explain what that is. I've marked it as A2 for identification.
The tenant, the first floor, Sports Med, has hired Signs Lab to do their sign, their tenant-specific signage. So they put together a board there with some proposed materials on it. That will go on the front. You can see, it's kind of one of, there's these kind of four columns kind of in the front of the Carriage House building. That'll be mounted to one of those, and hardware will be into the, what do you call it, into the mortar joints of the brick. Then there's also a, some wayfinding signage, directory signage located on the back of the property, proposed for the back of the property. The really, the, the front door is only to one tenant's space. The, the main entrance for the building and access to the elevator actually comes from the back, so that's where the directory will be. None of that's visible from the road, but it just helps people that park in the back know kind of which floor each tenant's on and how to get to them.
And are both of those signs, would they both have the same dimensions?
I don't know where we ended up. I know the HPC had wanted the front sign reduced, which we agreed to. Do we have the dimensions?
HPC actually requested that both plaque signs.
Okay, so they ended up the same size.
And just for the record, the July 25, 2019 report from the HPC is the current one?
Yes. All right, so you've, you've agreed to revise the plans to provide for the dimensions recommended by the HPC, namely 24 inches in width and 36 inches in height?
Correct.
And that would be the same for the, for both of the plaque signs?
Yes.
Okay. The HPC also recommended that the sign, those signs be installed into the mortar joints on the Carriage House to protect the historic brick. Did you agree to comply with that?
Of course.
And the last comment in the HPC's report recommended that the plaque signs be set off the face of the building to allow airflow between the sign and to protect the historic brick.
We would agree to that.
And did you mention the materials for those?
Yeah, we went into it a little bit. Precast concrete posts for the, for the freestanding sign with a, it's meant to look like steel, but it's actually a fiberglass faked I-beam on the top and bottom. And then these clear anodized aluminum panels with vinyl lettering. The tenant signage is a little bit different. You can see the materials going around on that board. Yeah, and then there's a, there's a backing for the freestanding sign that's valkramat, which is like a cement board product we've used in a lot of our signage. It's kind of a cross between wood and cement, which we have good luck with for longevity. In case you can pass some samples around of that material as well.
So other than the signage that you just discussed, are you requesting approval for any other amendments to the site plan?
No.
Just for the signage?
Correct.
No further questions?
Members of the board, questions? Let me just ask a question. I just want to make sure that, that freestanding sign is not lit. There's no ground-mounted lighting, there's, it's not.
No lighting whatsoever. No, the only lighting, you know, the, the tenant signage isn't lit either, other than there's four approved, you know, sconces, exterior sconces, but no additional lighting, no.
And this right here is the material for the signage, not the, is this?
It's both. So there's like a big backing, you know, the gray backing. It's probably easy to see this one. It'll be similar to this, and then we have the backing, and that's the cement board that you see in the background there, and then we mount these clear anodized aluminum panels.
So it's a color contrast.
So we have offsets there as well. Makes it easy for us to go there. When tenants change, we can swap out the panels without reviewing.
Question? For the, for the wall-mounted signs, is it just for one tenant, meaning there's just be one business on that sign, or will that also have multiple businesses planned for this?
No, that's just for the first-floor tenant. You know, they have the whole first floor, so they got some signage allowances in their, in their lease that they can go for this approval. It's, you know, also because it's a little confusing. They're the first floor of this building, but you don't really enter through the first, the front door, so there's a little bit of a wayfinding aspect to it, too, to say that they should really be walking around the backside.
So regardless of the tenant or future tenants, the front and back signs will always match?
The front and back, no, the back sign is a directory signage. So the back signage does have multiple tenants on it. The front sign is just Sports Med Physical Therapy. Does that make sense?
And that's because only one of the clients will be entering through the front door?
Yeah, they, that's, that's into their space. That enters directly into their space, whereas the main entrance in the back enters into a lobby with a elevator and stair tower.
Okay, thank you.
And the sign in the back, I think you may have mentioned this, is not visible from the street.
Correct.
Or any adjoining properties, correct?
Correct, only visible from the back parking lot.
Mr. Caulfield?
Thanks. So if I was going into the Sports Medicine through the front door, I would not be able to access their space that way?
No, I mean, that's, their signage, that's why it says entrance and rear, because their main entrance is back there. I think it would, I.
Would you think of like maybe a smaller placard sign? Like, I mean, I understand the directional of the way finding to get people to get to the back. I don't know, just like maybe a smaller sign in the front. I'm perfectly fine with it being in the back, but, you know, but, I mean, something just to think about. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's tenant-driven more than anything. I think all tenants, you know, especially paying for a brand-new medical space like this, they want some, you know, they want some visibility from the street.
And we have reduced the size of the sign based upon what the HPC recommends. Very much so.
Any other members of the board with questions? Ms. Harris?
How many tenants do you anticipate total in the building?
Four.
Four, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for members of the board?
I have a couple of quick questions. We have these signs in the front, and I assume they're two-sided, so you can see them from either direction that you're coming in, or?
The freestanding sign?
The, the post-mounted sign at the street is a two-sided.
Yes.
Is there any reason why there can't be, let's say, in that bottom bar, something that says entry for building is in the rear of the building? Who's going to come? I guess my question is, who's coming to that front door? And I would think if someone's coming to the front door, they would want their sign on the front door, as opposed to a sign that says, "For this particular tenant, go to the back door." There's something, doesn't make sense on the front of the building to have a sign for a tenant who you can't get to from the front door, and you're essentially telling him to go around to the back. That, to me, that defies logic, even if they're the biggest tenant in the building, which is probably the case. But it bothers me that at the, it, the first question is, does anybody enter through the front door?
It's kind of up to the tenant. I don't think that's their intent, would be that anyone would come to the front door.
The answer is, nobody's going through the front door. So why, when you say 325 Claremont Avenue, and then you have the four signs for the individual tenants, why can't you simply say, "Entry for all practices at rear of building," or something to that effect? Right on that one sign, then it covers everything. They see a sign that says, "You enter through the rear." It, it seems to me strange that the one tenant that's on the first, on the upper floor, I'll call it the upper floor, facing the front, doesn't have a sign about them, what, what exists is a sign about one of the other three tenants to go around to the rear. It's just a strange.
To, to be clear, though, that, the window that that, you know, wall-mounted sign is adjacent to, that is their window. That's not another one of the tenants. That's the tenant that's there. I don't know if that's clear, but I think it's a good idea, the, you know, we might have to make it a little less wordy, but, you know, on that other, the lower sign panel, or the lower kind of fiberglass I-beam down there, I think it would be a good idea if it said, "Entry at rear" or something like that.
Entry at rear of building, and that, to me, what that does is eliminates, frankly, it eliminates the sign on the front, and there are four tenants, they're all listed on the board, says entry to all tenants in the rear, and then whatever you want to do in the back, I have no problem with, but then you don't even need this sign in the front. front.
I, I know it's very important to the tenant that they wanted some signage for their space, you know, I, obviously, it's up to the board whether that's approved or not, but I, I know they felt very strongly that they wanted some building-mounted signage for themselves, separate from the, the shared monument sign.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm sort of not, it, it's an odd thing to put a sign up high in a building at the top of the stairs that essentially says, don't come in here, go to the back. If you've already told them to go to the back by the sign in the front, discussion whether or not there might be a, a small, a smaller plaque sign on the front is one thing, but to have a sign of the scale, even the reduced scale you're talking about, seems, seems kind of odd to me for one out of the four tenants.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if we added entrance at rear, or something to that effect, at the bottom of the monument sign, the, the freestanding sign, I think it could be removed from the, from the Sports Med Physical Therapy sign, but I think, you know, I know the tenant still wants signage presence on the building. Maybe it's reduced in size, maybe you're comfortable with a smaller size. If it doesn't have to say entrance in rear, it just said Sports Med Physical Therapy, but that's the kind of premium unit in that building.
What happens, what happens at the back of the building? What's on the sign at the back of the building?
That's more just your standard directory sign, so it says, you know.
But it's outside mounted on the building?
Correct.
Something similar to this way, you know.
Yeah, but smaller. Yeah, I mean, like the, it's just, the front entrance, you know, belongs to that tenant, you know, and the back entrance is for everyone. So the idea was that the back entrance had the directory with everybody's name on it, because that's the main entrance for the building, and the front was for them. Now, this tenant chose to not use the front of that, that front entrance, but it doesn't mean that the next tenant has to not use it either. Sports Med could also change their mind. They have full use of that entrance, however, they want to set up their space in the future. So that's very much their dedi, you know, that's a, denton's dedicated to them, whether they choose to use it or not, whereas the back one is for everyone.
Let me keep trying to pursue this, because it's still, it's still seeming strange to have a sign anywhere near the scale you're talking about, essentially as pure advertisement, after they're already on the signboard in the front. And the signboard in the front may have other flexibility. I suspect that sign is more than, I'll use that sign that you've set up as the example, is more than the six foot wide. And by the way, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm at the point where I'm not worried that, you know, that's why signs in the R3 district, because we made that decision a long time ago. We said this was going to be an office building, so that's not my concern, my concern. For example, if you had three modules instead of the ones you have, instead of the two modules you have on that front board, you might give Sports Medicine an entire vertical slot, and the other three tenants, smaller signs within that zone. So they get plenty of advertising right up front. They're not just one of four, they're the prime tenant. I get that. It, it just seems very strange on this historic building, regardless of what the Historic Preservation Group said, to have a sign that is to the one singular tenant, not a sign for the building, on the face of the building, when they've already been recognized in the sign in the front. So I'm, I'm looking for a way of giving them more primacy with the design of the sign in the front, without necessarily then putting up another one up on the wall, because they get the sign in the back, where everybody's going to go to park anyway. So I'm trying to give them a slightly larger element in the front.
Yeah.
You understand what I'm saying?
I, I do. And, you know, I, I think the, the tenant originally came in and spoke with Graham, I believe, about kind of what they, what their goal was, what they wanted. I think the first one they proposed was 18 feet wide across the entire top of the window. We have kind of chipped away at that. The, signage is important to all businesses, and I think, you know, this sign that, the, the quadrant of the freestanding sign, you know, as proposed, is 15 by 22 inches.
No, I think that's too small. That's why I was suggesting you make the sign a little wider, so you actually have three columns, and then you give them an entire column, and then you can figure out how you want to put the other three in the module next to them, that they all need equal-sized signs. I'm willing, I'm willing to give the sports group, which is your primary tenant, a larger sign. I just think it can be built in to the design of the sign that's right there on the street. It'll give them more presence, because right from the street, coming in either direction, they're going to see it. And it's going to be, just going by the scale of what you have there, it's going to be two foot 11 or, you know, two foot 11 high by probably 15. So you, so you basically do a third module, and then you can decide how you want to share the, the other three within the context of the design. But the sports facility will clearly have the primary presence on the sign, if it's the one on what I will call the curb side of the sign.
Yeah, I mean, that, we could certainly look at making that sign, the front sign, the freestanding sign wider. I see what you're saying. I mean, they could have the whole top.
And the other two could have three horizontal elements, so it would almost, I mean, there's a design that works. The question is whether or not you can convince your tenant that that gives them at least as much as they would get with just that little tiny sign on the street, because you can't see that from a distance as you're driving anyway.
Yeah.
And, and you're not going to, and, and your other building, as you say, is set so far back, and it's a flat sign against the wall, that, yeah, they, they could see it, but they primarily see it if they were walking, not, not if they're driving and see a sign that says entry in the rear, so. I'm just looking for some, frankly, I'm looking for something that doesn't smack a sign up on the front of the building in what is otherwise what I would call a symmetrical, classical design of the building, and throwing the sign on the one side just seems kind of odd, and I understand their reasons, but it seems like an odd solution.
I mean, if symmetry is the issue, we could certainly do another sign, but I don't think that's.
I know you could. You could put two of them up there for them.
Right. If that's where our hang-up is, we could, I'm sure one of my other tenants would be very excited about that.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying not to make it the, let me see the name of that tenant again?
Sports Med.
I'm trying not to make it their building.
Sure.
I'm trying to avoid it becoming their building. And the only singular sign that's going to be on the front in a, even in the reduced size of, is this 30 by 42 the reduced size? No. What's the reduced size number?
24 by 36.
Even the 24 by 36 is a pretty good sign.
That far back from the road, though.
That's a big, that's a big sign. Yeah, because you're 50 foot back from the road.
Right, I don't think.
But I'm giving them the sign right up front on the road.
I know, but I'm trying to think how big I could possibly make, like, I mean, what size are you thinking for the, for the freestanding sign? How big would, would the board approve, I guess?
What are our regulations on signs?
So I, yeah, include the regulations.
I'm sorry.
My memo under planning considerations, item two, I note that freestanding signs are permitted in non-residential zone districts under 347-110.3. They'd be set back at least five feet from the front property line, have a maximum permitted area of 12 square feet, and a maximum permitted height of six square feet. The sign that they're proposing has a total signed square footage of 11.6 square feet, so they're a little short on size now. They could expand to the full 12 square feet.
Yeah, only like six.
That's not going to get them.
It's not going to get what you're talking about.
Much closer, but nothing says you can't. What's, what's considered the sign? So I understand that the mention of the sign is.
The sign panel, so the posts don't technically count.
The posts don't count, but the address counts?
Yes, yeah.
And the note on the bottom that says, go to the rear of the building, is going to count?
I mean, that, that's just what's in the existing sign that are permitted, so here, this is all subject to variance.
We can, we can approve anything.
Right, the board is not hamstrung by those specific regulations.
That we wish to a degree without, but you also don't want to upset all the other people that come in for signs in the future, so it's not as if, I, I'm not, if it was just the body of the sign that's giving the information, aside from the address, then I think there's enough room to, to do it, but.
Wouldn't it be better, I mean, to leave the freestanding sign at the current dimensions, perhaps reduce the sign on the building, the size of that? Because just regarding to your comment, Mr. Fleischer, I mean, I understand you don't want it to appear to be their building, but most major tenants in office buildings, now admittedly this is a smaller one, but they have half the building, and we've all seen buildings that have major tenant names prominently displayed.
Yeah, then sometimes in the building for the major tenant.
And they appear to be their building, and, you know, and major tenants who are paying a lot of rent expect, you know, visibility and more signage than might be available to other tenants.
I'm giving them more, I was giving them more, I just wasn't giving them the sign on the face of the building, so it was the my head.
Could one option be to relocate the 325 Claremont Avenue address and the entrance at rear sign to the plaque sign to free up additional square footage on the freestanding sign, perhaps?
Say that again?
So you put the address and the entrance at rear in the plaque sign that's going to be affixed to the building, take it off the freestanding sign, and then all 12 square feet can be dedicated to signage for the tenants?
Yeah, I think the address has to be.
Just a thought.
Yeah. I mean, I guess that's up to the board.
I don't know how other people feel, I'm just giving you my reaction.
Yeah, and honestly, you know, I.
It's a small building, you know, to name the building after them in essence is.
Well, they pay a premium for that first floor space, you know, there, there's, there's kind of, I don't know, basement spaces, but there's lower-level spaces, and then the top spaces don't have as much windows. Kind of the selling point of that space is that you get the prominent whole first floor.
I understand the business, I understand the business.
So I've got to advocate for my tenant as much as possible. They are, they very much want building-minded signage, if we could vote separately on it or something like that, you know.
I mean, they, they've proposed a freestanding sign that they're happy with, okay? So, I mean, I think what the board's concerned about is the duplication and the, the size of that sign on the building, the, the two building-mounted signs. So, I mean, you could approve the freestanding sign as proposed, and you can tell them the limits of the size on those panel signs on the building-mounted signs. I mean, they started off with, they start off with.
42 by 30.
42 by 30. You know, and then HPC wanted to cut each dimension down by six inches, but, you know, if that, if that reduced-size sign is still too large in your mind, you can restrict that size, if that's what you want to do.
I could, yeah, we could restrict it, but then does it lose its, its value? I don't, I don't know, I guess I don't know the answer.
I don't think that building-mounted sign is for drivers, you know, passing by on Claremont Avenue. I think they're going to get up to that door and say, oh, I have to go to the back. So I don't think it needs to be 24 by 36 inches, you know, wide or high.
They're already, incidentally, they're already, if, if what we talked about goes, they're already, already going to be told that all entries are in the rear of the building, right on that front bar.
Right.
Down below, so they, they, they'll have no reason to go up to those stairs if they read the first sign.
Right.
Yes.
So I get the need for the signage on the front, but I think it could be greatly reduced. The signage that was presented in the drawings has a lot of dead space, a lot of blank space. I think you can make better use of the space on the sign.
Sure.
I, I would have what the HPC.
And just in furtherance of Ms. Harris's comments, I included, under planning considerations, item three, is four square feet is the maximum permitted size for plaque signs in the ordinance where signs are permitted, so for your benefit.
So let's get it down to four square feet, if we have to do it, and.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Does anybody use the front entrance?
Um, no. I don't believe they're currently using it, but it's not like, the building is not designed so it doesn't, you know, can't be used or anything, and it doesn't, that's to say that the next tenant won't use it differently.
But, okay, but you're principal tenant now.
The current tenant, correct.
Only, only, the physical, whatever they're called.
Physical therapist, yes.
Physical therapy. They only, they want their, their clients around the back.
Correct.
They don't want them coming up the front.
Correct.
Okay. I don't see any, I don't see any point then in putting a sign on the building, their sign on the building, because they'll find out by looking at the freestander that all entrances are in the rear, and Sports Med Physical Therapy will be one of those entities in the rear. So why put something on the front? Because they won't, like has been mentioned, you drive by, you're not going to see that sign on the building as readily as you're going to see the freestanding sign.
Mm-hmm.
So if we can come to some agreement on the sizing on that freestanding sign, then I think that's sufficient, rather than signature of the building, which people don't need. They don't need it. They, they've seen it on the street, oh, I go around the back.
I think that.
And everybody goes around the back.
It's that, I mean.
And if you get a new tenant and they want to use the front, that's another story. It's not the story we're hearing now.
I'd like to ask a different, a different question, and that is, since this is part of the larger complex, meaning the Georgian Inn and all of that, is the, is the signage that's being proposed, does it complement in any way the other signage for the Georgian Inn, or is it completely different? And then that's the first question. And secondly, for the Georgian Inn, do they have a plaque of some sort that's on the face of the, of the building at the entrance?
So to answer your question, it doesn't match the signage of the George, no. We've made a conscious decision to kind of keep them separate in a few different ways. So there is a monument sign, the signs that were approved for the inn itself, those are painted wood signs, which are much more traditional.
On the building itself.
There's a freestanding one at the corner of North Mountain and Claremont, and then there's plaque signs definitely on the back entrance. So, yeah, there's plaque signs that say the George on the front and back of that building, you know, smaller, more kind of rectilinear, linear signage, but, yeah, add both entrances to that, and then the freestanding at the corner.
So it would be consistent, then, to have some kind of signage on both buildings?
Sure, yeah.
Any other questions? My, my, you guys have made a very clear decision to try to separate the two properties in every way other than the parking lot, if you will, which is sort of a shared parking lot, and there are a lot of, there's a lot of history to it, but you made the decision on the windows and everything else to make these buildings really very different from each other. They're not, they're not a paired set, per se, anymore, which, which is a discussion I had way back when. I just, I just find it strange to have a plaque sign on a building at a point that nobody, at an entrance point that nobody uses at all at the moment, and it's unlikely to, and, I mean, it's almost, it's ironic that a physical therapy facility, which is chosen to be on the upper floor, for a lot of good reasons, I suspect, and they get the continuity of the floor.
Their first floor, though, just to be clear, there's a lower level and upper level, but they're the, it's, it's confusing with that building, because there isn't really a ground floor, but they're the, like.
They're the first floor up. They're at the top of the stairs, or they're not at the top?
They're at the top of the stairs, but there's a whole tenant above them.
Yeah, I know, and, and I know there's a basement as well. So there's a whole tenant above them, right. So all I'm saying is, physical therapy of all things, to have a sign at the top of a staircase seems strange in and of itself, given the realities of the people that they're also dealing with, especially when it's not even an entrance, so.
Mm-hmm.
I'd rather give them more of the sign in front and make the sign bigger, I'm talking about the freestanding sign near the property line, by a little bit, by giving them one whole vertical slot and figuring out how much space you need to get the other three in there in a reasonable fashion. And I, I'm still uncomfortable with that sign, so I have no problem with the freestanding freestanding sign in this theoretical R3 zone, but, and I have no problem with the sign in the back, I just, I certainly have some problems, I just find it ironic to sort of do that, initially representing, go to the back of the building, but now saying, since we've already told them that they don't need it for that purpose, so it's purely advertising of their logo essentially on the, on the building.
Yeah, which, is there intent, you know, I mean, all businesses, you know, I think want to have as much sign as they get, we're trying to balance, you know, as much as we can, having a historic building that does have, you know, business, approved business uses in it, medical uses, you know, trying to give them as much as we can, I like the idea of a larger freestanding sign, I don't know how much larger we can get with it, you know, if we're talking about another, basically, vertical column.
Well, my point is, if we're going to, if we're going to shrink, if we're going to shrink the one that's on the building, aren't you better off having what I'll call a double stack at least on the front-
Sure.
For the sports therapy facility, and maybe put the other three collectively-
Yeah, I think you could give them the top half of the sign, if you made the sign wider.
You made it a little wide, you gave them, you gave them three rows and the one big sign for the-
Well, three columns, I'm thinking, almost, for the bottom half of it, so the other three tenants, and then the, you mean the physical therapy could have the whole top half.
I see, I think, I know, I think I understand what you're saying, but that wouldn't allow them the verticality, probably wouldn't allow them the verticality of the logo, very much. I mean, I'm looking at their logo, and I'm saying a horizontal sign is probably not
Do we need to get into the configuration of that freestanding sign, I mean, you can work out what your tenant-
Right, if you guys just set the size, we can work within that, sure, front layout, and, you know.
Well, the question is, how much beyond 12 square feet do we go, and we're willing to not have the address there if that helps you any.
I think they indicated they want the address.
No, no, I know that, I'm just saying-
I'm just trying to get past things that we don't need to be arguing about.
It wasn't an argument, if he needs more space and we don't want to make it bigger than 12 foot, he may say, "Oh, the address can, isn't needed," because I'd rather have more space for the, for the, for the tenant, that's what I was saying.
What decides that sign, whether they're on the 78th?
Just the sign itself is four by eight.
So that's the-
The piece of valkram.
Graham, he said four by eight.
Yeah, that's four by eight.
That one? Was that a variance?
There's no standard in this zone, there's no standard in this zone.
But that, that wasn't in this zone, was it?
This, we're coming in for that.
Oh, you're coming in for that?
We use the, you know, the display, but, yes, we're coming in for this.
It's a pending application at the-
It's a pending application.
It's in an office zone where signage is permitted, so.
Yeah, I, the answer is I'd rather go horizontal, the other question I have is, which is not clear here, the ordinance always says five foot back from the property line, as I see this sign now, it is literally on the property line.
It's three inches off of the property line.
So it's at the property lines, that, now, I guess the variance is for a sign period, and then whatever rules we want to establish for it would be the rules we establish.
Yeah, the point of my inclusion was just a point of reference for the board to consider.
I'm just, I'm just looking at that sign that they're coming in for, and that's only about two foot off the, that's only about two foot off the curb.
If it should, it'll get a crack at that.
That's not the curb, that's our, that's a, that's a driveway.
Okay, you have any further presentation?
No, we don't.
Any public comments?
Any, any members of the public with comments or questions for this witness or comments on this application, since there are no other witnesses? You want to sum up this preliminary?
Well, I would just make a couple of comments, Mr. Fleischer, first of all, the location of the freestanding sign was recommended by HPC, and it's about four feet from the sidewalk, so it appears to be, the property line is only three inches, it's set back, I think, a normal distance, almost a five feet, really, that the ordinance requires, albeit from the sidewalk, not the property line, and I understand the board's concerns, and it's always a concern about a plethora of signage on any property, I don't think you have that here, you've got a very nice, attractive freestanding sign, and a little bit of a business identification sign, which is driven by the major tenant of the building, and it's important to them, is it needed? No, it's not needed, it's desired by the tenant, and, you know, certainly my client is trying to provide the tenant with, you know, something that's important, I think a reasonable accommodation here would be to reduce the size of the wall-mounted sign in the front to the four feet that the ordinance allows in, in other office districts, and perhaps enlarge the, the size of the freestanding sign, as you suggested, to provide a little bit more space and prominence for the major tenant that's occupying half of the building.
Just to ask a question, you said reduce the size of the front building sign to four square feet, are you leaving?
The wall-mounted sign.
Yeah, so what about the one on the rear?
I don't think there was any concern about this.
Okay, so, so you're asking for the reduced size as per HPC?
Well, we've already reduced it to HPC, we're willing to reduce it smaller.
Well, there's two building-mounted signs, correct?
One in the front, one in the back.
The front one, you've agreed to reduce it to four square feet.
Further reduce it.
Further reduce it.
Right, reduce it to four square feet, right?
Right.
Okay, but what in the rear?
Would remain 24 by 30.
The recommended size by HPC.
Yes.
The one in the front, you'd be reducing from six square feet to four square feet.
So the question is, what would be the sign size on that freestanding sign?
Well-
And they don't let attorneys do sign calculations.
We can, we can, right now, if I understand it, it is five foot by six foot, so it's 30 square feet right now, if everything, if everything that's going to have letters or wording on it counts, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, it's four, three, and according to what I heard, the, the place where the address is has to be counted as part of the sign, and the bar below that has to be counted as part of the sign, so therefore, it's, it's now basically-
Is that how you-
Five foot, that's the way, that's the interpretation I received.
Yeah, I'm just wanting, I mean, like, I don't know, it doesn't seem like that's how you do, because that's a struck, part of the structure, but, maybe not, I don't know how the-
I think, I think, given that everything here needs variance relief, the board is, you know, can kind of decide the appropriate size of the sign, but, I think that, so, in the, the ordinance does permit freestanding signage in the R3 zone for multifamily residential dwellings for address purposes, but they're a different size, structure component, and that encompasses address inclusion as part of that sign structure, so, it's difficult to-
I'm just going by the interpretation.
Right, so the interpretation is, this whole thing is a sign, right.
The sign is four foot eight by five foot, because if it includes the section that mentioned, that has the address, that element is five foot wide, not the lettering on it, but the element is five foot wide, so if you're only counting the lettering, it's a whole different set of criteria, but, the elements between the posts are basically four foot eight in one direction.
Is it four foot three?
He's counting the entire I-beam.
The I-beam counts because it's, it's a sign.
So that's essentially four foot eight, I follow you, and then the height-
You understand where I'm coming, it's four foot eight by essentially five foot in height to the bottom of the second I-beam, if you're going to put things on it, like, go to the back of the building to enter, so, that becomes a very big sign, so, I'm just trying to figure out a singular rational solution that will make pretty much everyone happy, and I don't know if there is-
So, perhaps, since the front plaque-mounted sign has been reduced by two square feet, you could add two square feet to the freestanding sign, could be a potential solution, I don't know, just, just-
This doesn't get you very far, you know what I mean, if you're talking about it's already five foot tall, you're going to be making the width bigger by a couple of inches.
No, no, the, the answer is, I was looking to be in a more horizontal mode, the way this other sign that you're representing is, and, but that was in exchange for not having to also have the wall plaque sign, so, if you want the wall plaque sign, then we'll just stay within the rules for, for this, if you want the wall plaque sign at something at about four square feet, then we'll stay within the rules for this sign, and it has to meet those rules.
With the one exception that we're going to add that entry at rear building on that one panel.
But, but it's going to, but we're going to have to grant the variance for a much larger sign than is otherwise permitted.
Well, no sign is permitted, so you're-
Okay, otherwise would have been permitted in a place where offices are allowed to have signs. I'm not, I'm uncomfortable making this sign bigger than what we'd permit in another place that offices would have signs, because then everybody in every office building is going to want to make their sign bigger, and why not, and they're going to say, "You allowed it even in a, off-site in a building that wasn't an office building, how do I, how do I ever fight with them about that?" is, you get a worse situation, because then, then there are no rules at all anymore, then everything's a variance, so.
I mean, I, I think we should just approve the freestanding sign as submitted to the board and leave it up to the owner and the tenant to figure out how to configure the signs for their tenants.
Would you allow them the additional area to put that entry at the rear of the building?
Along the bottom.
Yeah, okay.
But, but you're saying that, and not allow the plaque?
No, they, they could do the plaque, but they could configure it in a way that the sports med gets a bigger plaque than the other three tenants.
No, no, he's talking about the wall plaque.
Oh, yes, I would, yes, yeah.
You would deny the wall?
I would approve the wall, the wall plaque at four by four, I mean, at four square feet.
Four square feet, two by two.
And retain the same size of the freestanding size as proposed, and allow them to reconfigure the layout on the freestanding sign.
That wouldn't make any, okay.
Okay, so does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Well, first, we ought to have some discussion, make sure we're all on the same page, we'll start with Ms. Harris.
I think I just said what I thought, but, I, I-
Just repeat it for everyone.
I understand the need for the, the building plaque signs, I think the front, the front sign, even as HPC recommended, is, is way too large, and that it should be further reduced, I'm fine with the side plaque sign, and I think, and I'm also fine with the freemount, the freestanding sign with the additional wording on the bottom I-beam.
I piggyback right off of what my colleague just mentioned.
I think that the plaque sign on the building isn't necessary, I think that adjustments could be made to the freestanding sign to accommodate the tenant, and with the tenant having a sign in the back, once people are directed to the back, he gets two hits, two bites of the apple, so, I would approve it with that modification.
Mr. McCollough?
I agree with Ms. Harris.
Mr. Simon?
I agree with Mr. Church, I think if you configure the freestanding sign correctly to give, you know, primary space to the tenant, that the front wall-mounted sign would be unnecessary, so that, I would approve that condition as well.
Caulfield?
I'm in favor of the freestanding sign and also the placard in the back, and like, maybe like a planter or something up in the front entrance, so people don't have to go there, be forced to go in the back or something, I, I just don't like the placard up front, but I do agree with most of my colleagues, thank you.
Okay, what I'm hearing is essentially the, the sign as submitted, and we have different opinions on, on what is now the two-by-two plaque on the front, and the plaque on the rear would be the same size as proposed, that matches the agreed-to size with the preservation.
Right, that's 24 inches wide by 36 inches high.
So that would be at the back, and of course, that one is, just, so I'm clear, does that one mention all the tenants, or only?
That's a directory sign, so it mentions everybody.
That's a directory sign, so it mentions all the tenants within-
Correct.
Within that, on the sign in the back.
Can I just, I mean, where is the detail on the rear building sign?
It's really, you know, the north elevation just shows the size of it.
Well, you show a box, right?
Yeah, it doesn't go into detail, I don't have all the tenants or anything there, again, I wasn't even sure if that's required for variance, since it's not viewable from the street.
Well, there's no signs are permitted, so it is a variance.
Correct.
So, just so it's clear, that's, it's, the identity is going to be a directory sign.
Not just for one tenant.
Okay.
Correct.
So, okay, you have about three different opinions, I think you have to vote on the three different variances that way.
We're going to go around again.
Well, no, I think someone should make a motion with respect to each respective variance, each respective sign, so we could start with the freestanding sign, which, as the size proposed, but they can add on that bottom panel entry at rear of building, someone needs to make a motion with that.
I'm sorry, but can we do that one last, because it seems like if I'm not going to get the front sign, you guys are more willing to give me a bigger plaque, like, freestanding sign, so if we can start with the plaques?
Well, at least, I was, I didn't hear anybody else, I didn't hear anybody else say that.
Okay, well, someone should make a motion with respect to one.
Let's make a motion.
Hold on, in terms-
If the motion is approved, then you're there, if the motion is not approved, then we have to go back and come up with another motion that might involve other details of the kind you're talking about.
Okay. So just to be clear, for the freestanding sign, we're willing to go to, or the proposition is that it goes to the, the 12 square feet as in non-residential areas, or this is wide?
No, no, that's not, that's not currently, yeah, and that wasn't the majority of the discussion.
All we have is, we're working with the elements that have been presented, with the condition that they write, all entries in the rear on the bottom of that sign, that's what we're starting with, and then we'll see if there's a motion, and we'll take it from there.
Well, let's start with the wall signs as requested, the easy one is the side, right? So motion to approve the side directory, the back directory sign.
Twenty-four inch wide by 36 inch high directory sign on the rear wall.
Yes, that.
Second.
Do it, do it all in favor.
I think we do it all in favor on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, progress.
Okay, motion to approve the front plaque sign at a total of four square feet.
Second.
Okay, now we'll do a roll call on this.
So this is the plaque sign. At four square feet, okay, Mr. Caulfield?
And if it just say, "Go to the back," is that, I mean, four square feet is very small.
It just has the tenant name, we would remove the-
Yeah, without those stuff there.
In favor? In favor? Ms. Harris?
In favor?
Mr. Simon?
No.
Mr. McCollough, uh, sorry, Mr. Moore?
Upstate.
Mr. McCollough?
We can, we can defer for the moment if you want.
Mr. McCollough?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
No.
Mr. Fleischer?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Four-square-foot sign on the front of the building.
No.
Okay, motion fails.
All right, now let's try to go back on the front sign.
Freestanding.
The freestanding sign. I'm going to ask the applicant a question, how wide do you feel you need it to be to meet your needs and the needs of your primary tenant, and please don't go nuts with it, just as conservatively as you can, give us what you think you- And please don't go nuts with it, just as conservatively as you can, give us what you think you actually need to get there. Yeah, just thinking.
Before you can tell, what's the actual size of the, of the front lot from, because there's no dimensions?
Right here at set back.
No, but just from the distance from the property line to...
From the property line, it's three inches apparently.
No, to the, to the building. So if, you know, you can, I don't have like a 10-foot sign, just in terms of what's in that grassy area at the proposed location.
It's got all the room there. What is it, 50 feet?
Do you have a scale diagram? It's substantial though.
The size of front lawn is secret.
You can look at a parking space, those are 20-foot parking spaces. At least 40, you know.
About 40 feet, you said, for the lawn area?
I'm just guessing based, I mean, parking space is 20 feet, it's got to be at least two of those in there lengthwise, you know.
Between 40 and 50.
Yeah, 45 maybe.
So let's have some quick discussion if anybody has any thoughts on what might be appropriate. My, my, my own gut tells me that it should not be more than the equivalent of a third module.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, but that, that makes it 50% wider, right? So you've got the existing panel there, just the panel, the background panel is four foot three.
So we go up to?
Six.
Six foot, let's say six foot.
Okay.
So six foot for the panel size, is what you're saying?
Well, we're, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're talking width, I guess really we're talking about six foot between the posts because we're counting that I-beam as part of it too. So if we did six that way.
Well, no, that starts with 4'8" then. The 4'3" is just the panel.
Understood, but I think we could live with six, going from 4'8" to six, right? That would give you enough room for three modules.
Okay.
And then height?
Shouldn't have to get any higher, I suspect.
No. So with the 3'4" plus the 6, what did we say that was, is that four foot eight as well?
Whatever you're talking about. 3'4" and 4'1". Yes, 4'8".
You know, I don't know if you guys want to say six by five signage would give us 30 square feet.
I was going to go the other way. I was, I was going to go down to four, six by four.
Well, I would appreciate if we can do, just because of layout purposes, and I know everyone's got a different sized logo and name or whatever, if we kept it in square footage, then at least I have a little bit of play rather than exact dimensions.
Okay, but we don't want it to become eight foot wide.
Understood.
By giving, by giving the prime tenant a sign bigger than he was going to get on the building. I mean, the notion here is that that sign is roughly no more than the 110 wide, which is almost what he was getting on the building. If you took one module, it's basically 110 wide, as I read it. Says one foot three high by one foot 10 wide, so it's already almost two foot wide. Which is what you were going for.
Right, for the six feet.
So it shouldn't have to be any bigger than the equivalent of two of those signs.
Okay, so what are we saying, leave the height the same? We'll do six foot wide by four foot eight would be the sign panel?
Yep.
We could live with, I think we can make that work.
Okay. Can we get a motion on this freestanding sign? Did you get the dimensions on that?
Well, you said six foot wide by four foot eight inch high, and my understanding is that includes the address, the panels, and the lower panel with saying entry at rear building. Is that correct?
Anything was, yes.
Well, this...
But not the columns themselves, everything but the columns, basically.
Right.
So the drawings though, the dimension of the post is six foot high, right?
Which would remain.
Not the panel.
He's going six wide and then four foot high.
Four foot eight inch high.
Four foot eight inch high.
For the panel, okay, gotcha, okay.
Are we clear on the height and the width? The six foot width is everything excluding the post?
Correct.
And the four foot?
Eight.
Eight includes the horizontal beams?
Correct.
And, but again, does not include the top of the post or the bottom of the post.
Correct.
I move to approve the signage with the six foot width and four feet eight inches in height.
Sign panel?
The sign panel.
Is there a second?
Second.
And, well, I want to complete the whole thing and to deny any plaque on the front of the building.
Yep.
I just wanted...
Double deny the plaque.
Double deny.
Do you want to do it all in favor?
The conditions would be the two relevant comments, or the relevant comments in the HBC report also. Correct. Okay.
And I'd like you to agree to submit it to Graham for a final review before you act on it.
Agreed.
All right, so on the last motion, do we need to do a roll call or how, is everyone in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
We'll take a 10-minute break while we locate our chair.
Okay, we're back on the record.
The next application is that of Mengzi Li and Wen Tao Song for property at 11 Oxford Street. This is an application for variance to construct in addition to the existing two-family dwelling. Property is in the R2 two-family zone district and is designated on the township tax maps as lot 55 and block 4,308. A variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45A2 to permit a three-story principal building where two and a half stories is a maximum permitted. A variance is also requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45B1 to permit a minimum front yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required 25 feet. And a variance is requested from Montclair Code Section 347-45C1 to permit a minimum set back, side yard setback for principal buildings of less than the required six feet. Is the notice in order or enter taxes paid?
Yes.
Would you raise your right hand, all three of you? Are all three going to testify?
It's fine, yeah.
Yes, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
Okay, just give us your names and addresses, please.
My name is Wen Tao Song and I graduated 2001 on 1st Street.
My name is Mengzi Li, address 11 Oxford Street, Montclair, New Jersey. And we're the applicants and owner of the house.
My name is Montchak, I'm the architect.
Mr. Montchak, you're a registered architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Correct.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you proceed and tell us what you're proposing to do?
Okay. This is an existing two-family residence and... Thank you. Existing two-family residence, I guess we'll start with the site plan. The residence is here, it's quite close to the property line on the one side, but there's quite a, there's quite a bit of space on the, on the other side of the property. We're infilling it with a approximate 10-foot-wide addition running clear from the front to the back of the existing building, with the exception that the front is inset about a foot. The front of the addition is, is set back from the front of the existing building by about a foot. Okay? There's no variance for side setback. There's plenty of space for a driveway going back to a parking area, which is in disarray right now, but it will be straightened out with two designated parking spaces. There are also two parking spaces in the existing garage at the back of the property. As far as the variances we're seeking, it was explained to me that two of them are technical variances, one being that at the back of the existing house, at the back right corner, I'll show you in the photo. Currently, there's a, an area which has a partial foundation and a, and a roof going over that area, but only part of that space is infilled, is constructed. And we, our intention is to infill that corner from, from the existing foundation up to the, up to the existing roof. So while the, that corner is only less than two feet from the property line, 1.12 feet, we, we indeed have an existing building is constructed to that corner. Again, we're just going to clean up and infill that corner and get rid of this deck in the back and just clean up that whole corner. You can see it again here, where there's a void here under the existing roof, we're going to infill that void. That's going to become a staircase going from the basement up to the second floor. And the second variance concerns simply the front porch, and I handed out a piece of paper a short while ago.
So, Mr. Montchak, let's mark that as Exhibit A1.
Okay. Where'd I put it? So I was, I'm just comparing, I don't have, you know, all the property surveys, so I'm just comparing the distance from the existing, from the curb line to the face of the porch on each of the adjoining properties. They all fall within a couple feet and I, you know, I didn't go down the whole street, but for those five properties, two on each side and our property, we came to... Yeah, it's an average setback of 36 feet, six inches, 36 and a half feet. Well, yeah, that was just a way to, a way to compare, right. A common element to compare from the curb. And so the, the average is 36 and a half feet and our porch is 36 feet, 11 inches back from the curb. If there are any questions, I'll talk about the attic floor. Now, this, like I explained before, was an existing two-family building. One unit on the main, first floor, another unit on the second floor with existing space up in the attic. And so we're keeping that same arrangement. We're going, we're going to have simply a larger unit on the first floor, a larger unit on the second floor. And in the third floor, I'm making use of space at the front part of the building in order to get a better size space, but also this building is maxed out already at, for building height, around 35 feet already. I, we looked at different ways of configuring a roof for the building, including talking about removing the whole roof and putting a much shallower roof on the, on the top floor. We didn't like the appearance of that and it didn't really provide us any usable space. Would have afforded us a long skinny space down the middle, which wouldn't have been useful to us. So instead, I pursued a design which involved a, a more square area at the, like I say, at the front portion of the building and eschewed putting any living space at the back portion of the building. So what we ended up doing is we're, at least in this design, we're preserving the appearance, the roof line and the roof at the front portion of the building, and my idea was to set the addition back a bit from the front and create a separate roof element setback to not, to kind of not compete with, with the front of this building. I want to also point out-
Mr. Montchak, let's, let's mark that as A2, which you referred to.
Oh, okay. I copies, but I don't have enough for everybody, sorry. Oh, I would just wanted to mention that this building sits in a row of three nearly identical buildings. And if you, if you looked at, walked, looked down the street, I don't have the elevation here to show unfortunately, but anyway, they're, they're, they're like three sister buildings. The 11, 11A and 13, on the little aerial I, I handed out, they all have the same appearance with the same little window balcony at the top, the same kind of pitch of the roof, the same overhangs, stained glass windows and some of these other details on the front, the bay window. One of them has been fairly well restored, the other one not so much, and then this building is in need of quite a bit of repair. The homeowners have done quite a lot of work already. There's a garage in the back with some living space above existing and they've gone through great pains to repair it and restore it. They've put in hardy plank siding. They've maintained the, the windows the way they were and they're, they're putting up shingles that emulate tile on the, on the roof. So they're, they're going to go through quite pains to, you know, keep a nice historic quality to the, to the structure and they intend on doing the same thing with, with this building. So all that to say is that the intent here again is to really maintain the front of this building, kind of get rid of the vinyl siding and restore some of the quality that used to be in that building and to create an addition that can serve their purpose, but again, doesn't take away from the prominence of, and the connection that this building has to the neighboring two buildings. So with that said, I guess the other, the third variance I'm talking about is a variance for a third floor. I just want to make the point that this is not a variance from the building code. In other words, by definition of the building code, this doesn't qualify as a, as a third floor. It qualifies, it still qualifies as drawn, as designed as a, as a half-story. It has under 50% of the floor, sorry, compared to the floor below, it has less than 50% of the area with ceiling over seven feet and it also has, also part of the residential code, less than a third of the floor area devoted to habitable space as compared to the floor below. In fact, when I ran the calculation, we have 20, 22% habitable area compared to the floor below. So any definition of it being a, a third floor is purely under the definition of the zoning ordinance. It's, it's not a building code definition. And I don't know if you want me to add anything else at this point, or if you want to ask some questions now. I could just, maybe I'll just tell you what's on the third, third floor. I'm sorry, the attic, the attic level. We originally, there was originally a, a small bedroom with a bathroom, adjoining, a full bathroom and finished space all in the front, had no closet in the front. In fact, the room in the back had no closet either. And we simply are intending to put a master bedroom suite up there and retain a bit of an office space. So, oh, I guess it's important also to point out that the original building had a combined vestibule. So you came in a set of double doors originally and you came into a vestibule, this is the second floor, but I'm just, for simplicity, illustrating here. It had a shared vestibule, so you came in the first floor to a shared vestibule and then you entered either through doors into that first floor unit or you went up a set of stairs to the separate door to a second floor unit, very tiny vestibule. So what we did was we, we split the entrances. Now each unit has its own entrance. The first floor unit maintains the existing entrance and the addition encloses at the front the stair foyer leading to the second floor and also to the attic. So the upper unit went from, well, it had two bedrooms, it still has two bedrooms, but on the, in the attic space, we're adding, like I said, a master bedroom suite. So there's a stair foyer, again, that's what's up at the front location, master bedroom on the left side, master bathroom with a walk-in closet on the right. In the retained front gable space, we're keeping the, keeping that space as a little office and in the back, under the, also under the existing roof to remain, we're calling it a sitting room, but it's really more of a, a way to get out to a new deck proposed at the back right corner of the building. The roof plan, you can see how I designed the roof in a way to tie into the existing roof structure without having to alter that existing roof structure and again, to provide the, the headroom space that we needed to accommodate the floor plan. I guess I'll stop there.
Questions from members of the board?
We have to review from the historic presentation.
Yes.
... objective to a number of things that we still have in the plan, including the man-sard roof. You have, basically you have not incorporated any of the recommended changes that I, in terms of the overall impact on the construction.
Right, right, well-
Recommended, right?
Right, well, it was recommended to me to come here to discuss this purely in terms of the bulk variance and based on that to then go back to HPC and satisfy their concerns.
I'm not sure, because we want to be seeing the final way this is supposed to work.
Mm-hmm.
And they, and to come back simply to review the final finish. Because they're not-
The commission also requested under, under item seven to come back with final plans.
No, I understand, I understand that, but I-
I understand that, but I, I suspect it will, it may be a very different building. And I, and I'm trying to understand that none of the other comments were incorporated at all. So we're seeing essentially exactly what was shown to the commission, even though they objected to a number of the elements in the design, as best I can tell, in the kind of wording that we always get from the commission. Everything from the, from the whole, what they call faux mansard roof and a bunch of other things, all of which is still appearing in this and to some degree make up a big piece of the bulk issues that we're talking about. So I'm just trying to figure out where you are relative to all the other recommendations they've made and whether you intend to incorporate any of those other recommendations related to the entry doors-
Yes.
-materials, the railings, the mansard roof, because absent a mansard roof, you don't get as much floor area up there. So I, I think it's a fairly, I think it's a straightforward question because without the mansard roof, you don't get anywhere near the floor area up on that third level, the two and a half, whatever you want to call it. You will not get that amount of area if you incorporated the other comments made by the commission.
Yes, I understand.
Because of other things, they want the secondary element of the building, this new addition, to be quite secondary to the primary historic element and which I would have thought would have forced you to move further back from the front and so on, so forth. So I'm trying to understand where you are relative to your intent, relative to what the commission has, has indicated.
Right, well, it's our, it's our intention to comply with the commission's requirements. It was, we were directed or recommended to bring this project in its current condition to the board to at least, like I say, go over it in terms of the bulk variance require, variances requested. So for the infill of the back, the front porch, and yes, for the, for the top floor and to see what the reaction was. If, I understand your, what your dilemma is.
It's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation here because their, their comments, if followed, would end up with a very different building than what we're seeing now, starting with the whole roofing configuration and the need for this addition to be secondary on the street at least to this. You would not get anywhere near the same amount of square footage on the third floor that you're showing there, just for reasons of headroom and other things, if you went to a peaked, you know, just a standard-
Yeah.
-peak roof as opposed to the mansard and everything else. So I don't think, I think, I don't see how you can separate the two on the basic massing elements of the addition. That's what I'm trying to say. I, I have trouble understanding how you can separate. We've had situations where they've commented and have shown us a document that incorporates the things that the commission would like and then we can agree or disagree with the commission, but we've rarely seen where they've objected to a number of things or had significant suggestions where nothing's changed in the plans since that presentation.
I can state, I'll be, the commission has expressed some concern that plans get revised and then they don't have the opportunity to see what comes through in the revision process. So, and then the board is approving plans that they have not even seen or given their kind of review to. So the board has, the commission has requested that the comments come over and then they've requested a condition that the applicant, should the variance relief be granted, tweak the plan and then come back to the commission to present the final approved plan.
But ultimately, we're the decision maker-
In this case, right, that's correct.
And as Mr. Fleischer indicated, it's-
In this situation, the design of the door is-
Somewhere, the bulk of their comments are on siding and windows and things like that is a little different than things that clearly are affecting the, the bulk, which ties into the bulk variances and, you know, I, it is, you know, and, you know, we've been acquiescing in their request to send them back so they can see, but, you know, end of the day, it is our decision and they're making recommendations, not the other way around. And so I, I-
As secretary for both boards, I see the needle being-
You know, and they, for a couple of meetings, they were sending a representative here so we could at least have some dialogue as to our understanding what their goals were and their understanding what our goals are. Let me ask some questions and then I guess we're going to have to figure out how best to proceed. So just so, I understand, the very interesting stairway, exterior stairway in the rear, that is going to be totally gone, is that correct?
Correct.
It's a very interesting feature, but that's a definite positive that-
Perilous, yes.
The, the part, you know, I, you know, I think some of my concerns relate to what the Historic Preservation Commission is dealing in terms of the front facade and, but I also- the Historic Preservation Commission is dealing in terms of the front facade and, but I also want to make sure I'm, you know, part of the issue here is the third story and, you know, one of the things since the town introduced the two and a half story requirement that been observing a lot of places in town where there is, you know, ignoring houses on the hill which create their own issues in terms of stories, but in areas where the topography is relatively flat, there are not a lot of three-story houses in town. There's a large number of two and a half story or at least appearing, I don't obviously measure the length of the dormers, but, you know, just by appearance, it's, you know, half or less than half. So, but I want to, you know, that I'm concerned on, and this is just an editorial, it's intriguing, this house and the house next to it, it's like whoever was building it was confused and they built it right on the western property line, both houses, rather than roughly centering it and.
Right.
Creating, you know, one room that's nice for you so you can add to the house on the eastern side, but, you know, it's basic, you know, right off. And I want to understand, make sure I'm interpreting the drawing right as to the, what you're doing on the third floor, is it, so I think I'm reading it that you're setback seven feet from the current wall of the house, is that correct or that's, that's the dimension you have? I'm not sure, you have, on the, your first page, you have, it says seven-foot proposed dormer setback.
I think that's, there's a small dormer on the west side.
Well, I'm concerned about the west side, is.
But I think that the seven foot is to that.
On the west side?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, there's a small dormer to, that's, that's right, I didn't discuss that. That's right, I didn't discuss that. There's a small dormer on the, on the west side.
So, you know, so effectively what you're adding in terms of the third story as it, the west side, which is where, you know, you're a foot away from the property line, that's going to be set roughly eight feet. The dormer on that side is going to be set back roughly eight feet from the property line, is that correct?
Well, seven, seven feet from the.
Oh, it's seven feet from the property, okay, yeah, okay. So it's six feet from, roughly six feet from the edge of the building is where that dormer is located.
Correct.
And I guess following up on what Mr. Fleischer, have you done any, you know, obviously haven't done plans, have you done any thinking about how you would meet the objections of the Historic Preservation Commission?
With the, with the exception of the question of the massing of the, of the, of the roof, all the requests are, you know, we're fully intent to comply with all those requirements. Let me say, I have to admit that I'm not 100% sure what the historical commission has in mind for changing the massing. I was directed by them to actually look at the existing building in the back which has, is kind of a, of a square mass, I don't know if this thing is working or not, this kind of square mass of structure with a faux gable roof in, in the front of it. And this recommendation was, to me, was to think about that appearance and how I can mirror this somehow in the appearance of the front of this existing building here, which kind of comes back around to, I don't know, a mansard or not or what, I'm not sure. So, so yeah, there's some work to be done here, but that, that was, this was their suggestion and they, I don't, I have a, I can show you the sketch they gave me, but that's, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Monchek, let's mark that as exhibit A3 because you were referring to it.
Okay.
You should have a copy of their report.
Yes, I do. But it's kind of vague in terms of what the recommendation is for reconsidering the massing. And again, it'd be, you know, it's a difficult proposition, like I say, we're at 35 feet to remove, we could remove the roof and we could put a much shallower roof line on this, on this house. I don't know what the, what the historical commission's, what kind of, what their authority is in terms of this building and whether or not we can alter the roof in that manner, but this is something we could look at too. But I, I think that the result would be, you know, less than desirable, let's just say. Again, we, we're trying to work with, with the building the way it is and again, there are no other, you know, as far as setbacks, massing, et cetera, except for the roof, there are, you know, there are no other variances required here. It's quite a large lot and so in terms of adding the mass on the, on the left side, you know, the, the other, the other alternative was to have a gable running in the opposite direction on my, on the addition and run it kind of into the middle of the existing roof line, sort of kind of meet the gable. But, but none of these solutions are really viable for, for what they want to do.
Are there other questions from members of the board?
Have you considered just a simple dormer for the third floor on that side of the building without all the shaping and mass of the mansard going up to the top of the roof? A simple dormer that you do the headroom, you leave the space.
Yeah, but I still need a roof on my addition. My addition still needs a roof, so.
Yeah, that roof is not, the roof on, much if you're efficient. The roof on the equation is not the problem. The problem is the element that goes up to the top of the existing.
Mm-hmm, yes, right.
Yes, you need a, a roof over the addition, you can narrow the addition, but you're showing it in other places, you know, than just the addition, showing it as a base for your roof slope.
Right.
So if you essentially had that rose slope and then inserted a dormer as opposed to the mass of the mansard, you'd have a bit less headroom.
Yeah.
Which is all part of it, but it's now a very large unit. It's smart, you know, in type of, they can get it.
Yeah.
But it would take away the whole issue of computing masses and computing volume almost completely.
Yeah.
As an element. And, and then we can discuss whether or not the addition should be set back a bit further than it is, depending on some of the, we try to, really try to see to the original structure, but that's secondary to, to this whole issue of the mansard. Where I went to, there are common man's side.
Right, right.
Same, right.
Right.
So I don't know if that would be something that you would be willing to consider, this is a very long dormer. Certainly in the whole zone where you've already got sort of mansard, the normal windows coming out of the mansard.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
It's a combination of so many elements that makes it very overyorked, just like.
Yeah, right, right, right. Well, you know, I tried to, I tried to keep it simple and I think the, the most difficult part in terms of layout is the fact that we have to accommodate the stair in the front, which is why I suppose the Historical Preservation Commission recommended the possibility of introducing a, a tower element at the front corner, which, which, you know, I suppose can be done, but I did need, I did need the volume to get the stair to, to work properly because, you know, I have, I have, we have high ceilings, I've got quite a number of rises there to accommodate, so in order to, you know, that, that just expands the volume of that space and makes it more difficult to push that element further back because I have to tie it all into the existing structure, but.
The answer is, the answer is, I understand, but you've also got that nice long running hallway on the attic floor where you could accommodate more of the stairway than there.
Right, right.
Push the mass down.
Yeah.
And still get up to the floor because that stairway could be within the dormer zone.
Right, right.
So, I mean, there are, I'm saying there are other options that you could.
Yeah, okay.
Work on that would eliminate this excess mass of the mansard.
And you could also move the stair back to, like, on all levels, a little bit further into the kitchen so that it's not, so that you have more of a separation from the original building to the addition to kind of satisfy, satisfy the HPC's concern about the addition being subordinate to the original building.
Right.
Because I'm not sure that one foot does it.
Well, there were some structural concerns also with the existing building and where we were tying in and so that played a part too to getting us to where, I can revisit that, you know, I can certainly revisit that.
Are there other questions from members of the board? Okay, are there any members of the audience who either have questions, statements, testimony, anything whatsoever concerning the application? I'm just not coming up with a solution that doesn't have them coming back here and I'm not comfortable just saying whatever the Historic Preservation Commission decides is fine with me. You know, I, you know, I think the, you know, certainly in terms of the front yard setback, I don't have an issue. I mean, they're just keeping the existing line, it's consistent with the adjoining houses roughly, I mean visually, you can't tell there's any real difference as to those five houses as to how far they're setback.
Right.
I don't have a problem with the side yard setback with replacing the stair structure in the rear and closing that area and it's keeping the same setback as the house. I think the issue is with the three-story part which relates to the concerns of the Historic Preservation Commission as to how that's presented and I, you know, I don't have a good condition that says, do this. There, you know, I think, one, I want to give you flexibility into how you design it, but I, you know, I do agree with what the Historic Preservation Commission is saying is that the two pieces don't fit, the new piece does not fit together with the existing house and given the character of the adjoining houses, it's going to look out of place, but, and, you know, given that requires a variance, I'm troubled by that, but how would you like to proceed while we start there?
Okay, yeah. So I guess what I want to understand then is proceeding forward, back to the Historical Preservation Commission, if we, I understand, so we had a meeting, they wrote a report, do we have to meet again in a full committee with the commission or?
I think with the board and clarify, correct here, Mr. Chair, I think that the board is looking for a design solution to be presented by the applicant that starts to address the concerns raised by the commission and the board can review that at a subsequent hearing.
Okay.
To.
This board?
This board, correct.
You know, and as, you know, we indicated, you know, you will go back there for the finished product, but they, they don't really have a chance to say, no, they might say, this, they want to use a different material, something like that, but not in terms of the actual design.
Okay, all right.
So we want to get your approval of the design.
All right, I think that'd be good for you.
That we're comfortable with and then you go back to that, with that.
Any members of the board have other thoughts as to how best to proceed?
I agree, just I think, seeing those.
Okay, so the, do you, when do you think you can come up with revised plans?
We'll get, I'll get right on.
Okay, but let's rephrase that to be more specific. Our next meeting is November.
November 13th.
13th.
Yes, revised plans would need to be submitted to the, our office at least 10 days prior, which is the 3rd, but that's typically a Sunday, so that would be Friday, the 1st.
The 1st.
So by November 1st, we would need revised plans.
Yes. Or you can wait until December, either, because you're probably not going to start construction in December or January.
Well, yeah, we still need a couple, a couple of months, you know, to get our contractors and everything, so I would prefer.
Yes, so if you want to proceed in November, December is the 18th.
18th, so you'd have to get plans in by December, well, December 6th, I guess.
Yes, December 6th.
Okay. Yeah, I think we're November 1st.
Okay.
Okay, so December 6th is, oh, December 18th?
November.
No, you want?
They want November.
You want November, okay, so the hearing on this matter will be continued until November 13th. There'll be not any further notice given, so if you're interested in this application, we'll see you on November 13th.
Thank you.
I have a question. So at the very beginning of the application, we're told that the attic, the balcony on the attic will create a variance, but this topic apparently is not discussed in the, in the meeting. I just want to make sure the balcony on the third floor is fine with the board variance.
Referring to the rear corner of the dwelling, I don't know if that, was that reviewed by, is part of your testimony, Mr. Monchek?
I mentioned it, but.
They didn't really say anything about that.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of, that was part of our identification of the side yard setback variance, but we can review that further at the next meeting if there's any issues with that, but I don't think that there should be any concern.
I don't think you have to get rid of it.
No, so I think, I think it should be.
I'll suggest, I don't think you need.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Next application is out of 117 Valley Road LLC to permit the demolition of an existing ten-room boarding home on the property and the construction of three condominium units, which requires a use variance from section 347-47 of the Montclair Code for constructing the three homes in an R2 zone, a front yard variance on Valley Road of 8.4 feet whereas 25 feet is required and, and required setback of 28.1 feet for Walnut Street front yard, maximum lot coverage of 73.5%, where 66, where 25% is permitted and the construction of three stories where two and a half stories is permitted pursuant to Montclair Code section Property designated as block 1509, lot 37 on the township tax map. Are taxes paid and is the notice in order?
Yes.
Want to proceed?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stephen Azalina.
My name is Stephen Azalini, I'm an attorney in Florent Park, New Jersey. I'm appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant and owner of the property, 117 Valley Road LLC. The sole owner of that LLC is here tonight, in case we should need her testimony, her name is Teresa Zanelli. Our application tonight, as the chairman said, is for a use variance along with certain other variances necessary to construct the three townhome condominium project on the property located at 117 Valley Road. Just, I'm going to be brief, because I know it's late, so this is a brief opening. By way of background, my client purchased this property in 1998, and it was a legal, pre-existing, non-conforming use at the time as a 10-room boarding home. Last year, there was a fire at the property, and the building was partially destroyed. We were informed by the fire official that they believe the fire was intentionally set by a guest of one of the tenants. The fire official is here tonight, and he, after my opening, I would like to introduce him, so he could give just a brief, a current status of the property and accounting of what occurred. So, rather than repair and reconstruct the 10-room boarding home, my client is proposing a plan tonight. As the chairman said, our application is for these, to construct three townhome units. Prior to the filing of the application, I just want to stress that we've gone through many iterations of our plan, starting with the two separate structures, trying to subdivide the property, four dwellings. We met with the Development Commission, received a lot of good feedback from them, and we decided with the plan going forward tonight, after taking recommendations from the Development Commission. We also met with the Historic Preservation Committee, and I believe the board has their report that they've submitted. Like I said, we've incorporated a lot of the suggestions, I think many, if not all of them, regarding the structure and architecture of the building, which we will hear tonight from our witnesses. I will present tonight testimony from, I'd like to start with our engineer, Robert Weisman of Weisman Engineering Company, the site engineer, he'll go over the site plan, followed by Perry Chavestic, the architect. I had to work on his last name, I think I got it right, thank you. And then finally, Paul Ricky is our professional planner. As I indicated before, the owner is here, in case any questions come up that the professionals can't answer, she can come up and answer those. Any additional documents that we mark tonight that haven't been already submitted, we will mark it as additional exhibits, and I presume A1 would be the first one?
That's correct.
Thank you, counselor. With that being said, if there are no questions, you know, we can start our presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'd like to first call Mr. John Thomas, the fire official, just to give a brief recitation of what's happening at the property.
Would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
Yes.
State your name and address.
John Thomas, Fire Official, Township of Montclair, 1 Pine Street, Montclair. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you not just as the fire official of the township, but the lead, one of the lead investigators on this fire. On November 15th, 2018, northern New Jersey was hit with a major snowstorm, and at 5:26 PM, the Township of Montclair's emergency services responded to a working structure fire at 117 Valley Road. Upon arrival of the Montclair Police Department, they saw visible flame coming out of the mudroom in the rear of the structure. After five hours and one firefighter injury, the fire was finally placed under control. We had numerous towns come in to assist us in putting this fire out. The Montclair Fire Department, Fire Investigators Team, and the Montclair Police Detectives, with the assistance of ATF's IT Unit, were able to capture video of the suspect coming out of the back of the building, on leading us to, that was, it was a set fire. Actively, we are actively looking for this person, he has warrants out from Elizabeth for setting a rooming boarding house fire and threatening the building owner in Bayonne. I've known Ms. Zanelli for going on six years now as a fire marshal, and I've inspected her building many times. With some exceptions of minor violations that were, were taken care of immediately, Ms. Zanelli took the suggestion of putting surveillance cameras up, like I've made the same suggestion to many of my rooming and boarding owners. With that, that was the reason why we were able to capture the suspect coming out of the building. Unfortunately, he's still at large, we're still looking for him, but we do have a warrant that was issued out of Essex County for two counts of aggravated arson, defiant trespass, and burglary. So, with all this being said, I would like you to consider these facts in making your decision on this application. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Okay, then I would like to proceed with our engineer, Robert Weisman.
Good evening. Would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth in the matter pending before the board?
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Robert Weisman, business address 686 Godwin Avenue, Midland Park, New Jersey.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Weisman, why don't you give the board the, your qualifications?
I'm a licensed professional engineer in Lansbury Bay, New Jersey. I have a, I have a bachelor's degree in master's degree in civil engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology, owner of Weisman Engineering since 1991, been practicing civil engineering and surveying, and appeared before many of these boards throughout the course of my career, and have been qualified as an engineer surveyor in all instances.
And is your license current in the state of New Jersey?
It is.
Okay, I'd like to offer Mr. Weisman as a professional engineer.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, so, Mr. Weisman, why don't you take us through the current conditions of the site, the surroundings, and your proposed site plan for the development?
I do, clearly a, obviously a burnt out building on the property, with the detached garage, the northerly, or shopy when you're-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we don't have that sheet now.
That, that was submitted, but I-
Site plan, I'll get that.
Then why don't we make, mark that A1, if, there you go. I have a, I have a exhibit tab.
I also have extra copies as well. It's, so, just for clarification, this is the engineered site plan with the revision date of July 24th, 2019?
Yeah, but that's different than what-
Right, what he's marking is the existing conditions.
Oh.
I just wanted to go over the existing factors and study.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody has the existing conditions survey.
I don't know that anybody has.
Yeah, I think there was just, yeah.
I'll just correct the site.
Did you want to mark that as an exhibit?
Yeah, I mean, you can, I have a-
It simply shows the, the location of the existing building, detached, or a famed garage.
All right, Mr. Weisman, just so for the record, we're going to mark A1 as the existing condition site plan, that's prepared by your office?
Correct.
And dated, you got a final revision date of what?
It's dated 5/17/2019 with no revision. Again, it just shows the existing site conditions with the counter parking area, garage in the building. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Hello.
Okay, well, then go to the site, which I believe the board has last revised, 7/24/19, and that would be the, the site plan. The proposal is to construct a three-unit, singlestructure townhouse units with garages under, access from the rear of the buildings or the easterly side of the buildings, and parking on the northerly side of the property. There are four spaces proposed along the northerly property line with garages under each unit, which would provide a total of seven parking spaces, or six would be required, so we are complying with the parking requirements. There are two variances requested, one for the setback of the proposed building to the front yard of Valley Road, the closest point being 8.4 feet to the, to the right-of-way line, where 25 feet is required. The existing structure, just for the edification, the board is 11.5 feet from the property line, so we're a little bit closer from where the existing house structure sits. We're also requesting a variance for the height of the structure, where we have garage on the lower level, I defer to the architect as far as the layout of the interior of the building, but we're requesting the height variance as well, three stories versus the two and a half. We are proposing access from Valley Road and from Walnut Street with the two-way access at both locations, again, with access in, to the garages in the rear of the building. Decks would be up in the next level above the garages, we would have some overhangs that I showed the setbacks to, there's some iterations of this plan that we went through with, based on discussions with the engineer and planner for the town, we've been, we comply with pretty much all the requests and recommendations of the, of your professionals. We're proposing a, an eight-by-10 shed for trash cans and lawn equipment in the, they could be the northeast corner of the property, offset four feet from both the property lines, that would house, again, trash cans, lawn equipment, and the sprinkler units for the We have one handicap space proposed, which would be accessible to the units along the sidewalk and walkways from, along Valley Road. We also have a walkway along, exiting the southerly side of the building, going out to Walnut Street, and the, we do propose a drainage system that is, consists of four seepage pits in the northerly side of the, the property, in the, under the parking area, with the, an overflow connection up to an existing inlet in Valley Road. We provided drainage calculations according to 10-year storm for the, for the site. We did receive a letter recently from the engineer, and we've accommodated pretty much all the comments, again, based on what his letters outlined, we do agree that we need a burden, I'm sorry, Essex County approval, we will obviously acquire that. The Soil Conservation District, we obviously know we need to acquire that as well. The variance requests, I believe it will defer more to the planner as far as the reasons and the arguments for the request for the variances. Again, refutes and collection is through the, into the sheds in the back, there will obviously be some interior garbage cans that they could put out for the, in the shed for the, for the refuse and the recycling. The height of the fence has been reduced to four and a half feet, which is, I understand, to be compliant, and that is along the easterly and northerly property lines for screening. We do show some landscaping, I will get to that, I guess, in a minute, to go over the, what's proposed as far as the landscaping.
The board does have the landscaping plan, I believe, that was submitted, okay, thank you.
Okay. So, and I did go through the, just briefly, the drainage system we're proposing to collect the runoff from the drive, the drive areas and the roof drains to go into the seepage pits for groundwater recharge, again, with an overflow to a inlet in, in Valley Road. And again, that does comply with a 10-year storm event. We will provide percolation tests in the area of proposed pits for the course of construction to confirm that the pits would be two feet above the seasonal high water table, and that is conducive for, I'm thinking, within 24 hours and compliance with the, some more BMP practices for, for New Jersey. We understand that we are responsible for the runoff going out to neighbors' property, I believe the design takes that into consideration, where there should not be any runoff entering any neighbor's property, we'd be collecting it all on site. We did prepare a lighting plan, yeah, I guess I'll do the lighting plan first, if I may. I'm sure the board has the cognitive lighting plan. This plan was, was revised, again, based on some, this is a lighting plan dated 7/11/2019 with no revision, and it does show building-mounted lights with sufficient lighting for the drive areas, the walk areas, and no spillage onto the building properties with the appropriate The average grid panels are appropriate for the intended, again, drive and access aisles for pedestrians. Lastly, the landscape plan is, was not prepared by my office, it was prepared by unit associates.
Mr. Weisman, just hold on one second.
I'm sorry.
I, I liked your speed you're going to, but-
I'm trying to keep up myself.
I apologize.
It's the after 10:30 PM speed, but the, the lighting plan-
I don't think the board received a copy.
Is not one that I have a copy of, does anybody else have a copy of that? So, we should mark that also?
Okay.
And I think we're up to A2.
Yes, I have.
And if you could just tell me what the date of that plan is?
Sure. It is a-
It was, I mean, it was reviewed by your engineer.
Yes, he did review, yes.
Yeah, just tell, A2 and the date of the plan?
Seven-eleven.
It was, the lighting plan prepared by my office, dated 7/11/2019 with no revision.
And that's marked A2?
A2, yes. Okay, so, I'll move on to the lighting, landscape plan?
You should have the landscape plan, because I submitted that myself, okay.
Just, just for the record, the, the sheet we have says the applicant is proposing two, each of the two family dwellings, he's proposing two new, two family dwellings on the-
I'm sorry, that's a relic from the 360-inch road effigy.
Yes, that was a typo.
Sorry.
Part of a rendition that we abandoned.
Yeah, I'm not sure we get through the first sentence on that plan, so.
All right, so, the landscape plan basically shows plantings, foundation plantings along the Valley Road side of the structures and between the walkways, a, we have one large tree proposed, which should be the replacement tree for the 21-inch that's being removed on the southeast side of the property, it is a Kusa Dogwood. I, I don't know the, whether it is conducive or, or native to Montclair, I would believe it would be, if not, we will certainly comply with the, any landscape recommendations. We do have some shrubbery along the, and some evergreens along the easterly side, our side of the fence, we have an overhead fence, and some of these will grow to be higher than the fence, and the, along the northerly side, we again propose some, some evergreens that would propose some additional screening beyond the, besides the fence. So, again, most of the foundation plantings are along the Wesley side and the southerly side of the proposed townhouses. That's the extent of the, I didn't prepare the plan, I don't know the, I'm not a plan manager, so I don't know the specifics really of the, of the plans that's out there, what I've just described, so. That's the extent, I think, of what we prepared as far as site, site plan and landscape and lighting is concerned.
Mr. Weisman, just a quick question. If you just point out the property to the east, the current conditions, the side yard setback, the existing one as indicated on your plan is 5.5 feet, so we are five feet off, 5.5 feet off the property line to the east, is that correct?
Yes.
And that, that's increasing to 27 feet, is that correct?
That's correct, 27 to, well, it's actually 25.9 to the foundation, and 22.4 to the depth, and 20, you know, 25.9 to the overheads, so we are at the total of like 27 feet to the foundation.
Okay, and then with respect to the current lot coverage, can you just go over those numbers?
Sure. Yeah, apologies, you're right, should have gone over that. The existing coverage, we have the building coverage now at 26.9 percent, we're going to be reducing that to a 23 percent coverage, where the, well, 25 percent is permitted for the building coverage, we're going to give you a 23 percent, so we're eliminating a non-conforming in that regard, from 26.9 percent to 23 percent, where 25 percent is permitted. The total impervious coverage, we are slightly increasing from what exists at 66.9 percent to 74.2 percent. I don't believe there's a provision in the ordinance for a total impervious lot coverage, but we are slightly increasing that number.
Great, thank you.
I think that's-
I have no further questions, Mr. Weisman.
Questions from members of the board?
Thank you.
No, not, too quick, Mr. Weisman.
I just want to clarify, is that first parking space forward of the building line?
No, it's, in the plans, we did actually, no, of course, we did consideration when we did sit down with planners and the engineer, and we- down with planners and the engineer, and it is in line with the, with the, I guess, Valley Road side of the building, yes. It was not forward of that.
Well, let me, let me, let me try to ask the question differently. The building is not square to Valley Road, is that correct?
Correct. The lines are not parallel, the eastern Wesley lines are not parallel, so we have a closer sideline to the, I guess, in the northwest corner of the building, it's 8.4 feet off the foundation. We are 10 feet off on the southeast, southwest corner of the building, I'm sorry, to Valley Road right away line. And that line extended, we have the parking behind that, that line extended to the northern property line.
Okay, but therefore, by the time you get down there, it's closer than.
Slightly, yes.
It's closer than any part of the building?
Correct. Let me give you a scale number here. You're going to be off the seven half, you're so, off the right away line at that point.
And so let me ask the next question. Was there any consideration made, if you were going to do this project as designed, to making it parallel to the major street, since that's now the entry for everybody who's coming in, as opposed to paralleling it to, to Walnut?
Well, what we're, actually, the way it's configured now, we were able to achieve a, number one, a inside drive aisle to the, on the west side of the building, perhaps essentially the garages, as well as a four-foot hopper along that, that line.
I didn't say to push it further back, I simply asked, why not make it parallel to the main street? It's not, it's not a question of, I didn't say, it could be parallel to the first, to the least dimension, I'm just looking to get it parallel to the street that it's facing on.
Understood. But, again, what we would do is push the building, I guess, the north side of the building closer to the.
I didn't, you keep saying that, you could push the south side of the building closer to the street. I just said it ought to be parallel, was all I'm asking.
I think it can be done, sure.
Yeah, I think it can. I mean, from what I'm looking at.
No reason not to, yeah. Yes, no reason not to. It can be done. Any other questions from members of the board?
Just a question for Graham. Is there a minimum setback for the sheds, side yard setback?
Uh, yes, and it's six feet, so that shed actually needs variance relief for the accessory structure location. Thank you. Yeah, six feet from the side and six feet from the rear, so the.
I'm sorry, I thought it was four, so we can't achieve the six feet. We can slide it to, it would be up against that parking space and slide it closer, farther to south, so we can achieve, eliminate that variance.
So this is definitely, okay. And that means the rear yard requirement? Graham, is the rear yard requirement met? Turns the distance, just to clarify. Is it a percentage of the?
It's, it's an either or, so yeah, it's percentage or, so the lot depth, do we have the depth shown on this chart? We do not, so it's once, it's about 160, it's 25% of 160. It's about 40, right? Yeah. So, and they're proposing 54, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from members of the board? Just, like, going back to the trash and closure, just want to detail what's, what's going to be within that and how the garbage and recycling is going to be handled.
Okay, well, what we do, we were, at first came, we were, the planners were talking about the options, I guess, of trash and recycle. And my opinion would be to, which would probably be appropriate, and I guess it's obviously a sketching report, just curbside pickup for each unit, to come out and put it up front, it's a normal single family home to do. And the planners, kind of a ratio suggestion was to put a shed in the back to, put the cans in, everybody go, it's only three units, so we're not talking about the tremendous amount of recycling and trash. And we'd be able to, whatever the board would think was appropriate. So, it's, yeah, it depends on your way.
The, my other, and I, I gather you are simply here to describe what's on the landscaping plans, you have no particular expertise, and you don't know which plants are.
They're not certain.
No, or native or not native. I, I mean, the Kusa Dogwood, I mean, that's a native of East Asia, which is not New Jersey, and the Yucca is hardly, I don't, I don't know that I particularly care, but it would have been at least a little helpful to have someone here to discuss that and discuss what alternatives, you know, the Japanese holly, I said, there are, you know, hollies that are native to New Jersey that could be used. And I'd at least like to know a discussion of why, you know, non-local plants were chosen, and whether that, you know, if they provide a better landscaping for the property, and we don't have a witness to do that, but we'll, you know, that's not my biggest concern with this, so I.
Members of the board?
Yeah, I, I don't, on the landscape plan, I have no comprehension as to why there's a big, long walkway coming from Walnut Street, and it goes to a single door that enters into the side of the garage.
Well, that was part of the consideration, I'm going to defer to the architect in this regard. The, the recommendation was to have an appearance of affrontage along the, the south side of the building that, that looks at Walnut Street. For, you know, obviously, to keep it looks like, so there's, there's architectural features, again, that'll defer to the architect, and that walkway was part of that.
Well, that leads me further along, because there are no elevations of the Walnut Street facade, and there are no elevations of the Valley Road facade. There are no elevations of either one.
The architectural plans.
Well, you can show me where they are, because they're not on these set of drawings Let me, what I have is a roof plan. I have four of four, and the other two elevations, one is of the driveway side, and the other is of the parking side. So I don't have any elevations of the front of the building.
Well, that's on the landscape.
Yeah, four of four, should it show Walnut Street elevation?
Not on yours. Not on any of, that's what I'm saying, I don't see any elevations at all, the two streets the sides of the building.
What's the date of your plan that you're looking at, the architectural plans? You have four sheets, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And what's the date of the plan?
June 21st, 2019.
And then, do you have a July 30th revision date over on the left?
No.
So, what you said. The first sheet that I have is dated.
This is the first.
June 21st, 2019.
Oh yeah, it's still July 30th.
But the fourth sheet, it's just dated August 19th, 2019, but we, what we have is, the first sheet is the ground floor plan, the second sheet is floor plans, the third sheet is elevations, but it's the driveway view elevations and the parking area, the elevations, and then the fourth sheet is the roof plan.
So there are no elevations of the two streets?
The roof plan wasn't submitted.
No, I want everybody to have it, because otherwise it's hard for anybody to refer to.
I mean, the key elevations are the, the two street frontages.
Yeah, the two key elevations of the street frontages, and those are one we don't have.
Well, I actually.
Since it says four of four, it doesn't imply there's a fifth page.
So, I know the plans were, we, Mr. Peddow asked for 10 additional plans, and I had the architect deliver them. Those are the plans that I, that I received. I don't know if something happened in the printing?
Yeah, so it appears, based on just reviewing what we've received, it looks like the latest set of plans that we did receive did not have the secondary facade elevations, as Mr. Fleischer mentioned, but had the roof plan. So, those plans, the latest plans that we just got on October 4th, for the additional plant sets that we needed, excluded those two facade elevations.
Well, as I said, but it also numbers the sheets, and it says one of four, up to four of four. It's not as if there's a fifth sheet, and it would certainly need a fifth sheet to.
No, the roof plan was the floor, that's why I didn't bring it.
All right, so you got the plans with the roof plan, but not the ones.
I don't know what happened, maybe they got, fixed up.
All right, well, when, I mean, I'd imagine we're going to have to come back.
Well, because I saw the comments also from the.
I understand.
Historic Preservation Commission about that south facade, but we don't have a south facade to look at.
Right. So we'll need to resubmit those plans with the appropriate sheet for the elevations. I apologize for.
Yeah, I think you gotta correct it, because you've got two sheet fours floating around.
No, no, we need to, we need to submit a complete set that the board can review. So, we will do that.
Let's, let's, let's try and finish, I think we can finish up with the engineer.
Let's finish up with the engineer, absolutely. Because we're not going to finish tonight.
So, so, any board members have any questions for the engineer? Any further questions? Okay, are there any members of the audience who have any questions for the engineer? Okay, so, okay, you have your architect and your planner?
Right.
I, I guess it makes sense to get started with the architect, and just to see if there are other issues that.
I think that's a good idea, because then we can incorporate.
He can address and not have to come back a third time, and, you know, obviously, we are going to want to question him further once we've had a chance to review the elevations that we haven't seen and do that, but why don't we at least get started, and there may be other issues that he needs to come back on, and.
Sure, I appreciate, I think that's fair, thank you. All right, so let's start with Mr. Chevastick, why don't you give the board?
Why don't I swear to you? First of all, would you raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth of the matter pending before the board?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address, please.
Perry Chevastick, 132 Delaware Lane, Franco Lynch, New Jersey.
Okay, so, Mr. Chevastick, why don't you give the board the benefit of your qualifications?
I have a bachelor's degree from NJAT, a master's degree from NYU, I'm a licensed architect and a licensed engineer, and I've practiced for over 30 years, I've been, never been before this board, but many other boards.
And have you been qualified as an expert architect before other boards?
Many.
And is your license current in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'd like to offer Mr. Chevastick, as an architect. Okay, so, Mr. Chevastick, why don't you start with your plan and what you were retained to do on behalf of the applicant?
First, I'd like to say I'm sorry, I don't know what happened to those prints, so I'm going to get my money back before I get the prints. It should be the four sheets like I'm going to show you now. Yeah, the owner retained me when I had damage on a property to design a residential project for a site. We started off, as was mentioned, with four units, just something we were sketching around with. We had two detached buildings, and then we met, had a preliminary, preliminary meeting with the town planners, and it wound up going down to the three units, because the other ones kind of looked like too much anyway for the site. So what we're proposing is three townhouses, they're going to face, the front of them's going to face the Valley Road side. One side is on Walnut Street, and then one side, of course, is on the driveway side, and then the other one's on the driveway side also. As was mentioned by Mr. Weissman, the driveway comes in from Valley Road, hooks around and comes out on Walnut Street. It's the best layout for the type of townhouses we're proposing, and gave us the best additional parking. Of course, I believe we have, for the three units, I think we have seven parking spaces. I prepared the plans, when you're missing, there's two, four sheets, two sheets is the floor plans, and then two sheets are the elevations. The first, each townhouse square footage wise is a little less than 2,000 square feet, and it has a garage on the lower level. Garage is about 276 square feet, so one car garage. The first sheet I, I have on the board here is the ground floor plan. Each unit pretty much is identical, except for some features on the exterior of the building to make it look better from different views. The ground floor plan has a garage space inside, has a recreation room, has laundry facilities, has a foyer, and of course, the stairs that go up to the next levels up. The garage side is on the interior driveway side. So, if you understand, it's the front door is on the Valley Road side. This was something that came up during one of our preliminary meetings. I had to, I had to design the opposite. So from the meeting and the feedback we got, I flipped the whole thing and rearranged it. And this way here, it gives the Valley Road side a better view versus, before it looked like the back of the building, now it looks more like the front of the building. So, then from this level.
Here, you want to take me? That's on.
Yeah, you can see each unit, I called it home A, B, and C, just to distinguish the three, but they're basically the same layout, so. If you go to sheet two, it gives you the other levels, the first floor up and then the second floor. The first floor up, when the stairs come, come up, you have a living room, dining area, and a kitchen, and there's a powder room on that floor, and then there's a coat closet. And there's some, and at that level also has a balcony off the dining area. And that balcony is on the interior driveway side, not the Valley Road side. Then when you go to the top floor, when you come up, there's a little foyer up there, there's two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and closets, of course, for the bedrooms, and has a whole closet. Pretty much is kind of like a standard type townhome unit. Like I said, it was a little less than 2,000 square feet. Then, I'll show you the facades. The first plan shows the, shows the Valley Road elevation and the Walnut Street elevation. So you can see, as I mentioned, the tour of Valley Road elevation has the front door. That's the front door to each unit to get in. And then the, you know, it has bay windows, it has projections on the second floor to give it some definition, has a hip style roof, has dormers on the roof. The facade itself is hardy plank siding, and then I have mixed in some hardy shake, they make like a shake, they're wood shakes. I try to add as much detail as I can for Historic Commission, as well as detail around the windows, with trim and crown molding, and historic sill on the windows. The bottom base of the building, we originally had stone, and Historic Commission preferred stucco look, so we changed that. The roof will be a timberline roof, a three dimensional asphalt roof, pretty much the exterior of it. And then the question before was, why do we have that door on the Walnut Street side and the walkway? That was part of Historic Commission, they wanted to try to make this look more like a front, seeing it has exposure around the corner. So I added the door, the door goes into the garage. Whether they're going to use it or not, it's more probably for looks than anything. And then, the sheet probably don't have, I guess, is this one?
No, it was the other one that they don't have.
Oh, the other one you didn't have, okay. All right. And then, the sheet that you do have, that's the garage, side with the garage doors.
Hold on, Mr. Chevastick, should I mark the sheet he just spoke about that you don't have?
You're going to resubmit, right?
We're going to resubmit it.
Yeah.
So we'll just resubmit it?
That ought to cover it.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, these two elevations are the other two sides of the building, ones that I call the driveway view, which the cars will pull into their garage, and then the window down, and that's that little rec room that was downstairs. And then the window down, and that's that little rec room that was downstairs. The balcony is the kitchen area, is the kitchen window next to it. Upstairs is the bedroom window and a bathroom. And then there's three dormers on the roof, which was something Historic Preservation suggested we add. And then you'll see their comment, they want me to make them a bit bigger. And then the other side, I call it the parking area, where the parking...
Mr. Chavastick, could you just raise your voice a little bit? I'm having trouble here.
It's on.
Okay. All right, and then the other side, the parking elevation is kind of similar to the other side, except without the door, you know, that goes into the garage. That side is not as exposed, and probably we're going to need some of this lower area for gas meters and electric meters. And the facade of the other sides is the same as the front. It's all the same detail around the whole building, it's where there's no, like, make the front look good and the rest simpler. It's nice-looking all around the building. Pretty much that explains the homes.
Why don't we go through, I know the board has the Historic Preservation Commission memo. Can we take a time, let's just go through that memo and tell the board the things that you addressed, or we can address, because I think the memo has suggestions that can be easily incorporated without major changes, but let's go through that.
Yeah, when we had our original meeting...
With the Development Commission.
Luckily, there were some people there that are on the Historic Committee, so they gave us some feedback at that time. So with that feedback they gave us, I added as much as I can to it, so when we met them, I was at least a little closer. And then, of course, at the meeting that we had with the Historic Commission, they had additional input, they detailed everything around the building. So they gave us the letter with the requirements they wanted, and pretty much, we could pretty much meet all of them. I don't really see any problem with anything. It's mostly just, like, on the, on the one side, they wanted me to line up, you have the garage door, they want me to line up with the garage doors, they want me to line them up. They had some, somebody's, the roof showed over the doors, they were too wide, I can make a move now. So just a lot of little details that they preferred, so we have no problem meeting almost all these requirements.
I'm looking at the August 22 report from the HBC, is that the same one you're looking at?
Yes.
Just read comment one and tell me that's what you're going to conform to?
No.
No, not that one.
Okay. That's why I want to make sure.
I was going to point that out. I was going to point that out. Yeah, number one, while they don't have an objection to a three-dwelling units, they prefer, I guess, more of...
Yeah, I was referring more to the details of the building.
Right. They prefer a different style building. But they did give a lot of comments regarding our building and the way it could be...
So the balance of the comments in that report, comments two through eight, the applicant can meet those?
Yes.
Is that something you can update on the next set that you plan to submit to the board?
I mean, I think these are fairly easy to update on the next submission.
I could, but I don't know, sometimes we're going to go back to the Historic Committee, they make me move things a little bit here or there, but I can't do that for you for the next meeting, though. That's no problem.
I guess I'm concerned with the Commission's comment about the Walnut Street facade. Putting the door in there has not made that an active front of house facade, which is what they're looking for. They're looking at something that's going to tie in to the whole bunch of...
Right, when we met at the meeting, they suggested bigger windows on that side also.
Well, more than bigger windows, I mean, one of the problems is, you've taken the same plan, and regardless of the facade, you've just repeated it three times, as opposed to mirror imaging it or doing other things that might have put more light into that facade. But when you look at the floor plan, that second floor, to which you have a single window in there, includes a U, living room, dining room, and you have one single, I don't know if it's double hung or whatever it is, window to that entire thing, when they're looking to liven it up. Putting one window in the middle of the building does not give the building a sense of frontage on Walnut. And then the one door that's there is a door into a space, which as you say, no one is ever going to use.
Yes, to the garage.
So no one's ever going to walk in the door, and nothing in the rest of the facade is something to look at that implies that this street has a real facade on Walnut Street. So I have a, regardless of what the Historic Preservation Commission says, I have a lot of problems with the way it's set up now, aside from the issue of whether it should be three townhouses or a single three-story building, or the other thing. But I don't think this, there are opportunities to mirror image these things, to flip them, to modify the floor plan slightly, to take advantage of the fact that two ends of these three townhouses actually have a lot of open space on the north and the south, which has been totally ignored, essentially putting a single window in each of those facades, one of which is 50 feet from the nearest building to the north, and the other opens up onto Walnut Street. It's leaving, it's turning its back on anything other than Valley Road.
Yeah, Walnut Street, there's a big, we have a segment of about 28 feet from the property off.
No, that's not my point. My point is, there's nothing that gives it a sense of it being open and like the front of the building and welcoming, and like all the other houses that are on the street as you go in this R2 zone. This is basically ignoring Walnut Street entirely. So I have a lot of problems with the way this is set up, and frankly, even on the north side, you have 50 feet of open space there, which could bring in a lot of light and other things into these units, and we end up with a single window. Each one of these units could be literally equivalent of an interior unit, because the only thing you've done that's different than the interior unit is to place one small window on each of those two facades, as opposed to an open, airy, and I'm saying this even to the people who don't live there, or who want to sell these properties or rent these properties. There's opportunity to put a lot of light in here, and instead, we've got solid walls on both ends of the building, which makes no sense to me at all.
Well, the Walnut Street side, as part of our meeting with Historic Preservation, that was going to double the size of the windows, so that's going to let double the light in.
Yeah, but still little windows, it's essentially a blind facade with one window in the middle of it.
Yeah, I mean, can we put two windows?
I'm giving you my opinion.
No, and we'll take the recommendation.
To the sake of...
Sometimes what...
Something vulgar, she's that's one thing.
Sometimes what...
I would have trouble with that kind of literally blind facade.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Sometimes what happens...
On both ends of this building, because both ends are visible, given the 50-foot gap you have between the nearest building to the north, that's quite visible for anybody driving down Valley Road as well.
Yeah.
So I think you have a problem at both ends of this building that would make me not feel very good about approving this thing within the context of your relationship with the site.
Okay.
Are there other questions from members of the board? You know, I think to some extent, you know, we're trying to both give you guidance, but we're going to be probably asking more questions when we've actually had a chance to review the two facades, and we didn't see which of the key facades. But let me, the, there are two parts to what, I mean, technically is one variance, doing three units where two are allowed, but the Historic Preservation Commission is recommending doing a three-family house rather than this, and I think partially this is for Mr. Ricky in terms of his testimony as to, you know, we have a two-family zone that is comprised predominantly of two-family houses, and, you know, that, and this is something that is looking very, very different from what otherwise exists in the zone, so not only is there an issue of justifying three units versus the two units which are allowed, but there's also why, what is the justification for having a different housing type than what otherwise predominantly is located in the area? You know, and to some extent, that deals with what Mr. Fleischer was saying in terms of, you know, you drive down Walnut Street, you have houses facing Walnut Street, and they have a look, and this is looking very different from that. And so I, you know, I think both this is the architect testifying as to what the justification is for this, and then Mr. Ricky giving a planning justification as to not only why three units, but why three units as townhouses versus a three-family house. And, you know, I think doing that, you know, is, you know, and I think, you know, I think part of that is the architect testifying how they ended up deciding on this. I mean, he did a little on, they started off looking at four units, and that didn't really fit, and were discouraged by the township planners, but, you know, obviously makes sense, but, you know, I think, you know, ultimately, we want something that fits in if we're creating a variance, I think that's the key factor. And with that, unless you have something, I think we'll continue this. When, do you think you'll have the plans ready for November 1st, so we can keep... I gather the plans are done, they just were not submitted to us.
But I think we're going to make some...
I don't know whether you want to revise...
We may make some revisions based upon some of the comments you just heard.
And do you want to shoot for the November 13th meeting?
I would like to, and if we can't, I'll request it be carried if we can't get our plans in by the 1st.
Okay.
But I do appreciate the comments and...
Okay, so this matter will be continued until our hearing on November 13th, there will not be any further notice? Do we need an extension of time?
I don't believe so. I mean, if you do, I consent to the extension of time for the court act in this matter.
And then if, and if we need to continue until December, I assume you're also giving us an extension until then if...
Yes.
If we continue, because you're not ready to proceed.
We will need one for December.
Yeah.
We don't need one for November.
Okay, so if we don't make the November 13th, in my letter requesting it be carried, I'll indicate an extension to extend the time.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Ballot favor say aye.
Aye. Okay. Good night.